We will be starting in a few moments, please bear with us. Call to order, welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, May 18th, 2021. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Trustees be reminded to turn off your microphone and camera on your devices until you are recognized to speak. Please only use the chat box to type hand up. Once you've been recognized, please turn on your microphone and camera. We have guests on the line, of which some will be presenting delegations to us this evening. Opening prayer, National Anthem, and Oath of Citizenship. Trustee Kelly, would you please lead us in the opening prayer, the National Anthem, and the Oath of Citizenship?
Thank you, and through you Chair, in the name of the Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, we praise you for gathering us together this evening. As we open this meeting, may we conduct our work in your name, uphold your principles of inclusivity, and may our actions reflect your glory. To ensure that we are acting in the best interest for all, help us to keep your word in our hearts and that we may not sin against you. Through Jesus's name we pray, amen. In the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Please join us in the National Anthem and Oath of Citizenship.
Who's Kubler Ross?
Thank you, trustee Kelly. We'll move on to item 1.2, motions adopted in camera. Vice Chair Dork, please read the motions adopted in camera.
Mr. Chair, motions adopted in camera. A motion regarding property was adopted in camera. Information received in camera. The following information was received in camera. Retirements: Kelly Casconi-Brown, Claude Mallett, Christine Ray, Isabella Waters, Deborah Wilkie-Anderson, and Kelly Williams retiring effective June 30th, 2021. Presignation: Keith Boyd Design effective May 11th, 2021. Department head appointments: Elizabeth Camastro, Melanie Patter, Paul Ferguson, Donald Finan, Amanda Goncalves, Denise Gritmeyer, John Heaney, John Huxton, Matthew English, Matthew Kovacs, Joanne Lepore, Charles Lobresties, Lisa Micketsell, Sandra Moreta, Julia Mulligan, Michael Ralz, Suzanne Sabo-Mann, Paul Thompson, Anna T. Shirt, Lilian Well-Arajo, Scott Vanderwijk, Justin Yanto, and Patricia Urenici appointed as department heads effective September 1st, 2021 for a period of up to four years. Acting department head appointments: Laura Pujelis-Mier appointed as acting department head effective September 1st, 2021 to approximately April 5th, 2022. Mark Caterini appointed as acting department head effective September 1st, 2021 to approximately February 23rd, 2022. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Dork. All in all, we're moving on to number two, approval of the agenda. I see trustee Agnew, you have your hand up?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, thanks through you, Mr.
Yeah, trustee Agnew, you have the floor?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm wondering if it would be possible for us to add... So there was an information item that was coming to our April 20th meeting with respect to mental health programming and with, obviously with the meetings we've had that have ended a little bit early, we haven't been able to... We didn't get to that, and I haven't seen it back on there because we usually carry over action items. But I know that we do have stakeholders that are waiting to have that report discussed, and I'm wondering if we can have that put on as information tonight?
Director Daley, are we prepared to add that? Do we have that to report, access to the port?
It's in the April 20th board meeting package.
Okay, so we can add that. So let me go to my agenda. So we have an information item 10.6. And could you give me the title of that again, trustee Agnew?
Yes, can you just bear with me for one second?
Certainly.
Let me just pull up my email and I'll tell you what it is. Okay, it is, it was called "Mental Health Literacy Curriculum in Secondary Schools 2021-2022."
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Agnew?
Trustee Guzzo, you mean?
Oh, sorry, trustee Guzzo, pardon, I, sorry, I keep doing that, pardon me.
Thank you, mister.
Sorry, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to, I have two items for the agenda. One is, is I would ask that the items 10.1 and 10.3 be rearranged to happen after item 5. 10.1 being the student trustee report and 10.3 being the school update from Director Daley. And I would also like to add an information item, and it would be considered item 10.7. And the title of that is "Expanding Student Access to Online and Remote Learning."
Okay, can you, sorry, can you repeat that? My, my handwriting isn't great.
No, no, no worries. Expanding student access to online and remote learning.
Director Daley, do we have access to that report handy?
It's an information item, it's not a report, it's...
Oh, sorry.
I want to, I want to discuss it.
Oh, my apologies, sorry. Nope, okay, so we're adding now. To move items 10.1 and 10.3 to rearrange the agenda, if we don't get consent, we need 2/3 majority. So do we have any opposition to moving item 10.1 and 10.3 behind the delegations at number 5? So it would be in front of approval of the minutes? So seeing that there, seeing that there is no, Vice Chair Dork?
I'm opposed to moving that there.
Okay, so then we would have...
I would like to move it one step ahead.
You would like to move it?
Right ahead of all.
So we already have something as proposed by trustee Guzzo. Trustee Guzzo, are you okay with the proposal to move it ahead of delegations?
The only thing I would say is, is we have five delegations. I, and before we can make a decision on the delegations, I think it's really important for us to have the, the report from Director Daley so that if there is any questions, we can ask them of him. So I think we need to hear the delegations first because we do have guests waiting on the line already. I don't think it would be fair to them to make them wait potentially two hours to give their delegation.
Okay, so we'll, we'll call it...
I'll, I'll be okay with that.
You're, okay, you're withdrawing your opposition? So seeing that there is no opposition...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, trustee Intomasi?
Can you please provide what exactly is taking place? So we're moving items ahead of the delegations. That's my vote.
So, sorry, no.
Item?
No, Vice Chair Dork withdrew his proposal. So on the table is to move item 10.1 and 10.3 ahead of approval of the minutes, which is number 6.
All right, I'm fine with that.
Okay, is, seeing there's no opposition, then we can make that change. And if I skip it, I'm sure somebody will remind me that we've made that change.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. Vice Chair Dork?
That was my change, I'll withdraw.
Okay, trustee O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I have two notice of motions to be read of the information portion of the meeting.
Okay. Please, so this will be item 10.8?
Yes.
Please, please read your title?
The first notice of motion is called Stakeholder Feedback.
Okay, is that the complete title, okay?
Yes, and the second...
And the next would be 10.9? Sorry, go ahead.
Second notice motion is called Grade 9 Pre-AP and Pre-IB Math.
Grade 9, Pre-AP, and IB Math. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we do that all? Sorry for delay, we just had a discussion if it's required to vote on adding information items. I'd like to confer with our parliamentarian, Mr. Kapoor. Do we need to vote and get a 2/3 majority to add information items to the agenda?
Point of, point of clarification, though, Mr. Chair?
Yes, trustee Guzzo?
I, I thought you had asked if there was any objections.
I, yes, I, it was brought to my attention that we still may have to vote on, so that's why I want a clarification from the parliamentarian.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
As I understood it, Chair, the item that you asked whether there was an objection was on moving 10.1 and 10.4 up. I didn't...
10.3, correct.
10.3, sorry. It wasn't clear to me that you were, that that, at that time, you were asking if there was any objection to adding the information items.
Okay.
If you didn't, if you, if there is an objection, then yes, they would require a 2/3 vote according to 9.7 of the bylaws.
Okay. Can we, can we group them as, as consent? Or do we have to deal with each item individually?
If you get consent on all of them to, as a group, that covers you.
Okay, thank you. So do we have consent to add the information items that we have? Which was the mental health letter and expanding student access? And then on the, the notice of motions, we don't need consent. Is that correct, Parliamentarian Kapoor? Because we're going to be voting on the, we're going to be voting on the agenda as amended?
That is correct. The notice of motion does not require consent.
So do we have any oppositions of adding those two information items?
Mr. Chair, I have my hand up, but I do have a point of privilege. I understand the, the, the request of trustee Agnew because we've had it in the report before, but I'm not sure what the discussion item is for trustee Guzzo's request. Is there a moment where she can explain of what we should be expecting with that?
Trust, trustee Guzzo, that is a, an item that you would like to discuss. Is there a little more information that you could expand and give to the trustees? And then we can see if there's any opposition?
Absolutely. So it's in regards to the Ministry of Education. They've been doing some stakeholder feedback in regards to expanding online and remote learning beyond next year as a permanent option. And I think as a board, we should have a conversation about it and what it means and the potential impacts that it could have, particularly to our parents and our students. Because I don't think they realize or everybody realizes what's happening. So I'm trying to, to have a conversation with trustees so that we can inform our parents and students of, of what's potentially coming down from the ministry and if there's anything we can do as a group to protect some of the things that we have going on in our board.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yes, it helps. Would we be prepared for that, for staff to answer questions?
I, I, sorry, I can answer, it's, it's not...
Please, please go ahead, trustee Guzzo.
Sorry, it's not about staff answering questions. Actually, sorry, that's untrue. Director Daley has already provided it in his weekly report. There was a portion in there. Oxta has also sent out communication to all of us in regards to their submissions. So I, I just, we haven't actually had a conversation at the board about this as trustees. So I think it's something that we should talk about and what it means for our school board. The ministry hasn't come down with anything concrete, but it's been in the media. I also received access to the ministry's presentation, their PowerPoint presentation that they did, and it's, it's titled as "Expanding Student Access to Online and Remote Learning." I would be happy to share it. But it really is just the starting of the conversation tonight.
Thank you. So do we have any opposition to adding those two items?
I'm opposed, Mr. Chair.
Okay, you're opposed to, to both items or just the second item?
The second item.
Okay, is everybody in favor of adding the mental health 10.6 that trustee Agnew brought forward? There's none opposed, so that item doesn't need to be voted on? So we'll go to a recorded vote to add 10.7, which was trustee Guzzo brought, "Expanding Student Access to Online and Remote Learning." Go to a recorded vote, we need 2/3. Trustee DeRosa?
I'm in favor.
In favor, vice chair Dork? Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
Against.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hern-Turnata?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Rajni?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy's in favor. So we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 in favor to oppose motion carries. So that item is, is added. Now, next, we have trustee DeRosa.
I will see my turn, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, trustee DeRosa. Trustee Intomasi?
Mr. Chair, I, I really want to speak to the agenda once it's approved.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Carabella?
Mr. Chair, I had my hand up from before when I asked my point of privilege, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee O'Brien?
My question was answered, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So we will now ask for a trustee to move the agenda as amended. Can I have a mover?
I'll move to O'Brien.
Moved by trustee O'Brien, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Sorry, who's that?
Trustee Guzzo.
Oh, thank you, sorry. Age has not been kind to my ears. So we will vote on, sorry, trustee Intomasi, did you want to comment on the agenda now or wait till after we voted?
So it's an administrative matter, so I can address it now. For the, there seems to be some misconception that we're not completing our meetings. That end, I would ask the Chair to turn to 4.1.8, and if he could please read that out loud so that everybody can hear it. They may, that may rest concerns that we're aborting or we're not completing meetings. A meeting is completed once we hit 10 o'clock. Anything after that is voluntary. So I, I would ask that you read that exactly as it's stated in our procedural bylaws, thank you.
Okay. Trustee Intomasi, I don't find that your request is in order. Therefore, I acknowledge your point of view and what, and what you said, and you're, I respect your ability to, to have that opinion, but I won't take the matter any further. Trustee Guzzo, did you have a point of order?
No, Mr. Chair, you, you, it's okay, I heed to your response, thank you.
Thank you. So we will now vote on the agenda as amended. Vice Chair Dork?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
Against.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern-Turnata?
I'm in favor, thank you.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Rajni?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Motion carries. And I would just ask staff if they can help me out as we go through the agenda items as we've had quite a few changes. And I'm sure, I'm sure my fellow trustees will give me the grace and help me out in that matter also. Declaration of Conflict of Interest, are there any conflicts of interest? Seeing that there are none, we'll move on to item 4, there are no presentations. Yes, trustee O'Brien?
Thank you, it's a conflict.
Oh, sorry, I jumped ahead there.
No worries, I didn't have my hand up quite soon enough. Item 10.5 deals with budget. Occasional teachers' salaries are mentioned in this report. My wife is an occasional teacher with the board, therefore I will be declaring a conflict of interest on this item.
Thank you. Are, are there any other conflicts of interest?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, trustee DeRosa?
The dilemma, I will declare conflict as well, but particularly because of the same reason. But it, it's a matter, a matter for consideration is that every time a salary line is mentioned, I'm effectively, or both myself, trustee O'Brien, and myself are negated the opportunity to come, to comment on the other lines. This is a matter that hopefully we can resolve moving forward, thank you.
Thank you, we'll have, we'll have that discussion with superintendent Lofts afterwards, thank you. Moving on to item number 5, declined delegations. There are a total of two delegations which were declined for this evening. We have five delegations this evening. Our delegates are on the line, I will let them know when to begin. Item 5.2, our first delegation this evening is from Mr. Faruk, Ms. Ninenberg, and Mr. Kukulak. I hope I, I pronounced your, your names correctly, and if not, please let me know. Welcome to our board meeting. Please be reminded that you have 10 minutes for your presentation and that you must stay to the script that is part of tonight's board agenda. I ask staff to assist me in keeping track of the time. At the end of the delegation, there will be an opportunity for trustees to ask questions for clarification purposes. Are you prepared to begin?
We are.
Thank you, please proceed, you have the floor. Thank you. Please proceed. You have the floor.
This delegation we present to you today is a filtered version of the original. The original delegation is included with correspondence with the board, and we highly suggest that you give it a read. We come to you today as representatives of the collective body of the HCSB-wide student council presidents, and subsequently, all those who duly elected us as student body presidents. It is our primary duty that the wishes and voice of our constituents are appropriately represented and platformed. It is our sincere belief that the policy and vision of student representation has often been diminished and is not considered in many of the decisions that are made affecting our student population. The events in the weeks preceding this delegation would be one example of many where student dignity and inclusion has been disregarded when certain decisions have been made by members of this board. Every statement and every word we make as student representatives that is released is deliberate, insightful, and focused with the fundamental hope that it will elict an appropriate response through the decisions that are made by the board. We are here as students, for students, and it's highly imperative that you know how we, as key and relevant stakeholders of the board, feel. It is often up to us to express the voice of students that feel disenfranchised and disheartened by the leadership that is supposed to represent them.
As you know, we recently released a statement as HCSB student council presidents in opposition to the motion that was passed where the amended motion did not allow for the flying of the pride flag at schools. This is one of the issues as referenced by Jack that often seem to dismiss or engage for getting with student voice. There seems to be a consistent culture in board leadership and was time and time. Two other decisions, one's mine, which were reversed actually, that were similar in the fact that student voice was, was when HCSB banned gay straight alliances along with the sanctity of like charity decision. Most recently, I-26 has come under scrutiny from several students for not allowing non-Catholic student trustee in elected position and represent increasingly diverse student population. I hope you can really ponder for a minute that the fact of student voice isn't consistently and effectively considered or really truly weighed as valid input. Do you really make the right decisions on matters that directly impact HCSB students and make them on behalf of all of your constituents? Are your decisions always made in the best interest of students and educators alike?
With our board's motto being achieving, believing, and belonging, we believe that it is imperative for students and staff to feel as if they belong and are accepted in their environment to reach their full educational potential. And this must be reflected in the decision-making at the school and board levels. If we are to be a model learning environment, are we not to ensure everyone can comfortably be in a space where they can learn and work without their dignity being compromised? At the May 11 policy meeting, in relation to this policy being discussed and implemented that would affect gifted and IEP students, trustee DeRosa stated that roughly the 238, roughly 0.6% of students, I'm going to repeat that, the 238, roughly 0.6% of students with such assessments was a lot of kids, a lot of kids. In keeping with that thinking, is it, is this rationale applied to all decisions made by the board when it comes to all groups of students?
It is becoming more evident that a culture of personally motivated and personally biased behavior and decisions is rampant in board leadership. It is extremely disheartening and counterproductive to be a part of a board in which the trustees clearly don't work for their constituents, but rather their own self-interest. Again, we reiterate that there is no compromise to the dignity and well-being of any group. As an example, you cannot tell one group of individuals to disregard a flag with such obvious meaning and gravity behind it and try to replace it with your own design or to neuter the visibility as much as possible. It doesn't work like that. As leaders and representatives of our schools, we have listened to the members of our respective communities, understood their concerns, and are now asking that you as trustees do the same. If you are making decisions supposedly in our best interest, then should we not be invited to the table? We ask that as leaders, you stand with us to help make a positive change and moving forward, make decisions that are not detrimental to our HCSB community. School councils have CPIC as a mechanism for voice. For student voice, what mechanisms do we have? Where is the consistency in consulting for the student population on matters that directly impact us? It is imperative that going forward, the board finds ways to survey student voice and to truly take into consideration and account when making decisions. It is not that hard. For one, you can actually take the student trustees seriously. If the student trustee is sitting alongside yourselves, do not have an opportunity to speak and voice concerns, then think again about how difficult it must be for other students to have a voice and why it is so imperative that there are new processes and strategies to be implemented to reach the students directly and gather their input. There are councils with the board, such as the one that we are a part of, the HCSB Catholic Leadership Council, where there are elected students there to represent the student voice. You can use these councils to your advantage to hear the students' perspectives in order to make an effective decision that includes everyone. We have been told to toe the line, as shown through Bishop Reading being forced to delete our statement on the pride flag decision. But how can one toe the line if they are not given a seat at the table? As people who represent our student bodies, it makes it much more difficult to show our leadership when our ideas are not being taken into consideration. That is what we are here to remind you about today. We were collectively elected by our student bodies to be a voice for them. We are here now to say that you need to do better and you need to make sure you include us in decisions that have huge impacts on our success, our mental health, and overall our well-being as true Catholic graduates.
Oh, sorry, I was muted. Thank you for your presentation. We will open up the floor to questions from trustees for clarification purposes. I'd like to remind trustees that this is to be questions regarding the content of the delegation. And please be mindful and of the guests that we have with us today. So first, on the speakers list, we have trustee Guzzo, followed by trustee DeRosa, then vice chair Duarte, then trustee Entomasi. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to all three students for coming out and reminding us why we're here and how important student voice is. I have two questions. You mentioned that you felt that your voice had been taken away. Can you be more specific? Can you just elaborate a little bit more by what you mean by you felt like your voice had been taken away? I'm not sure who would like to answer that.
Sure. So a prime example is obviously with the recent vote regarding pride flags being displayed within our board at offices and schools. Students obviously were disheartened by the decision, although they were putting their voice in through the various outlets, whether it was ourselves or student Senate trustees. And the decision came and later, just yesterday, a post went up on Halton Catholic District School Board social media. That was a message regarding International Day Against Homophobia, Transphobia, and Biphobia. So it's, it's kind of a hypocritical for the board to make a decision like that, kind of ignoring the voices of a lot of the stakeholders and then to put out a message that's kind of the complete opposite message that they're sending from the board level, making a decision like that. So people, students don't feel like their voice is being quite heard at the level it should be at the board.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please proceed, trustee Guzzo.
What do you think as students we could do to change that? You know, you've mentioned, you mentioned that there's some committees that we can tap into. Can you just elaborate on that? Did you hear me? Did I get muted?
I can, I can.
Oh, there I am.
Hi. So one thing I think is, I know there's quite a few councils of students with the board. So I know there's like the one that Jack, Mike and I are a part of as the Halton Catholic District School Board Catholic Leadership Council. And as elected representatives in those groups, we're sent from our school to represent our student bodies. So taking surveys from those when it comes to large decisions like this, I think because we know our schools and we know our student bodies, we can touch into our schools and then get their input as well. So I think reaching into the councils, kind of doing a survey or including us in the decision would really help going forward and making decisions like these.
Yeah, I'll also actually, I'll add to Emma a little bit. The other way, students, obviously, as we get older and you turn, you turn to the voting age, you want to make sure that you look at, at the candidates and the people who represent you and do your research and kind of find the ones who most align with, with your beliefs. And we also want to mention that I think the outlets at which students can give their ideas, such as ourselves and the senators, should be a little bit, a little bit more promoted. I've had students come to us and tell us that they feel like their voice can't be heard at the student senate meetings, that they feel a lot of stuff gets, gets cut down pretty quickly. So I think just being more open-minded and listening to the students as valid stakeholders of the board as well.
Thank you. I do have another question, but I'll go back in the line. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'll put you back in after trustee Entomasi, and if nobody else asked a question, trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, and certainly welcome and thank you to the student delegates who are passionate advocates for their cause. As a, as a student representative myself many, many years ago, I, I have walked in their shoes many times and I can certainly understand, understand where they are coming from. My question, my question or my clarification is the following. Is there any point in time where their voice is being, is being prevented from coming to the board? Because I make a difference between a, a voice not being allowed to be heard versus a decision that may disappoint at any point in time, because.
Trustee Guzzo, what's your point of order? Trustee Guzzo, what's your point of order?
I don't hear a question.
Yes, trustee.
I actually did, Mr. Chair.
Trustee, trustee DeRosa, let me rule, trustee DeRosa. Trustee DeRosa did ask a question and then he went into further explanation. So trustee DeRosa, can you restate your question and then allow the delegates to respond?
Okay, my further explanation was leading to another question, which I'll have to think about now. But my original question was the following. Is there at any point in time where there was an outright refusal for any trustee student advocate from coming and plead their case to the board? And my other, the other.
Okay, trustee DeRosa, can we allow the delegates to reply and then you'll have a follow-up question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Delegates, please, you have the floor.
I think I can go ahead with this one. There is no, there's never been like a real refusal to let speak, but I think there is a cognizant and there is a deliberate sort of ignorance that comes with, you know, people of students coming down the board and talking to you guys. And, you know, 70% of the correspondence in that decision, you know, did support the flag. And with that level of support and that level correspondence, because it was a long meeting, you guys, like you guys probably remember it. It was a, it was a very long meeting. There's tons of correspondence. And when you guys still don't take that sort of correspondence into account, and a lot of it was student correspondence, it sends a clear message to me, I feel like, and a lot of other students that our voices are deliberately not being heard, nor are they being taken into account by decisions made by board leadership. And also, in the last couple of years, I've been friends with the student trustees, you know, the last two, three, four years, they feel like there's a culture of not taking the student trustee seriously, or sort of tossing him to the side and not really concerned about student leadership within the board alongside with you guys. Been an outright refusal, but there is a deliberate culture of just not really taking student voices into account.
I will add, oh, sorry.
Oh, please go ahead, sorry.
I will add that the original request to delegate on the topic of pride flags was declined under that it was over and done with, and we could not delegate on something like that, which kind of was off-putting at first because we knew that some topics had been delegated on after a vote, including masks back in the beginning of the year, so.
Trustee DeRosa, do you have a follow-up question?
I do, Mr. Chair, and that's, again, it's, it's a clarification question. So I'm trying to make the distinction between, and I certainly apologize if there was some refusal or some resistance to have you come to, to the, to the board table. But those decisions are made at some point in time for very good reasons or bad reasons, depending on what side of the fence you sit in. But I, my clarification point is the following. Is you, as you advocate for your cause, and I encourage you to do that throughout your life, is that done with the recognition that at some point in time you may be, receive a different decision than, than, than what is expected? And are you, are you cognizant of the fact that sometimes decisions don't always go necessarily the way you'd like, you'd like them to go? And I don't want to debate the reason why they don't.
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
Trustee, trustee Guzzo, could you state your point of order?
Again, that's not a clarifying question on the delegation that was presented. And actually, I would argue it's even argumentative with our students that are here presenting.
So trustee DeRosa, please let me rule when there's a point of order. You had asked your question and again went into some further clarification. Can you just restate your question and allow the delegates to reply?
So is the disappointment I'm hearing in the students' voice tonight a direct result of not getting the result that they wanted from the votes? Period.
When we advocate for something, I think it is with the deliberate decision to go against a decision that may or may not have been made. It's kind of a straw man argument to sort of go advocate for something, have that decision be denied against us, and then completely forget about it. I think the entire point of being an advocate and speaking about something is that if a decision is made that you do not agree with, you can go and fight it. You know, if you don't agree with it, you, you know, talk with board leadership, you talk with, you know, other stakeholders. It's, it's a bit of a fallacy in my mind to completely shut down when a decision isn't made in your order. So I don't think that's a super relevant question, considering you're telling us that we need to continue advocating for the rest of our lives as well. And the second part of that is, it's a multitude of factors that go into this delegation tonight, is decisions that were made by the board in the weeks preceding this. So yes, it does include that, but there is a deliberate culture of not being cognizant of student voices that we feel like is.
Thank you. Up next, we have vice chair Duarte, then trustee Entomasi, trustee Rashdi, then trustee Guzzo. Trustee, vice chair Duarte, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question for Jack. And I'm really happy to see the students out here, and Jack, I have a question, a clarification question from you. In your first paragraph, you mentioned that student decision was neglected. So it's very specific and it's not regarding correspondence or anything. I'm talking about student voice. And I'm always open to listen to student voice. So the question here was, is basically, there were three weeks from the day the motion was put on the table to the time it was voted. Question is, could this presentation of yours come to us during that period of time and not later, after a decision was made?
Sorry, you broke up a little bit for me. Can you?
Okay, okay, Jack. I'll ask you the question again. I'll ask you that question. You heard the first part, did you?
Just a mistake.
Okay, so I'll restate the question again. So there was three weeks between the time the motion was put on the table to the time it was voted on. Could your presentation or could your student council message have come to us as a board of trustees during that period of time? of trustees during that period of time? Or rather, it's come to us after the fact? So could it have come before that? And I'm always willing to listen to student voice and I'm very happy that you guys have come here.
I believe we did, I think we did send a correspondence.
Vice chair Duarte, you have a follow-up question?
Mr. Chair, I'm just curious, maybe we can find out about that later, when the correspondence came, because to my knowledge, I did not receive anything. Thank you.
Up next, we have trustee Intomasi.
Students, thank you. Very good appeal, very good presentation. It sounds to me like Catholic education and especially HCSB is preparing you well to advocate for yourselves. Having said that, my query is more about, is the system in place not working? It would seem to me that since you have student representatives at the board, it would be incumbent on your system to filter and send up information to them so that they can advocate bi-weekly or bi-monthly on your behalf. Is that not working? Is that perhaps where the problem is?
I think, like Fake had, had mentioned before, there, it does seem that the student, the senate trustees feel sometimes that they're kind of ignored and tossed to the side. And that culture kind of carries down to the students who carry ideas up to them. And I have a specific example of, I don't know which meeting it was, but it was, they were discussing green shirt day. And I don't know when this was, it was this year, but they were discussing green shirt day. And the whole meeting was just the student, the student senators cutting it down completely, saying it's not going to happen, we can't do that idea, we can't do that. And for the students that had brought that idea, that was pretty disheartening that it wasn't even going to be discussed. So I think the culture from the board is kind of carrying down to the senators and the disconnect is there. And they feel they're not having their voice heard. And when a decision, like the pride flag gets made, then that's just where people place the blame, because they feel that there's not, they're not getting their voice in, even if there was many, many correspondents put in about it.
Trustee Intomasi, do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, I do. So are, are you telling us this evening that your, the information is not flowing up to your trustees? Or is it perhaps a problem internally within the senate that's not allowing you to, to, to send questions up to the board? Because whatever we receive, we respond to.
This, this feels like you're deflecting a little bit. This, you know, I don't think this is necessarily relevant to the topic at hand, considering we're just kind of going in circles now. A student did delegate and several former students and they didn't listen. And it was actually, I think it was first come, first served for the delegations, and the first five delegations were accepted. It's more student voices and someone shut it down at the last meeting, as far as I've been told. It's, it's not so much that it's procedural thing, it's not so much that it's an, you know, board, the structure, it's the fact that it's more of a, a culture that has been permeated within all levels of the board that comes down from the top bottom. It's nothing to do with senate, it's nothing with the student trustees, the great people, great leaders. It's more so the fact that it, it doesn't matter what we say, because we feel that either way, it's not going to be taken into account. The, the system works fine, the culture and the, the sort of application behind it doesn't really. So like, it's not, it's not so much a process application, and I think that's just deflecting things, frankly. It's, it's more so the fact that we just feel ignored, period. That's what it is, so.
Thank you. Next, we have trustee Roche. You have the floor?
Yes, and through you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, I had difficulties opening the mic.
Sorry, trustee, trustee Roche, can I just make one comment? Trustee Agnew, I missed you, I'm sorry. So if you don't mind, after trustee Roche, I'll put you in.
I have no problem giving my, my spot to trustee.
No, that's no problem at all, Mr. Chair.
My apologies, my fault.
No worries.
If trustee Agnew want to go, I'm more than happy to give my spot.
Honestly, trustee Roche, it's fine, go ahead.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. And through you, Mr. Chair. My question was, was kind of clarification question. We do, I do have a question, because we do mention, we did, we did mention the fact that not all questions are able to go through the senate and not everyone is able to discuss in the senate. The senate group is a pretty huge group and it is, and it is considered, and it is considered a huge group of students. Do we, the, does, do we know, the question is, do we know how the senate functions with questions? Because we did mention not everyone can go through the, through the senate asking questions. But do the, do, to the, the question, do they know how, how the senate is working with the question, with the receiving questions through students? I'm sorry, if I can clarify it more, but I'm not sure if, if the clarification needs to be done.
Could you restate the question? I'm actually on senate, I'm very good friends with trustee Nick here, and I did co-chair the finance, the personal finance initiative that we did do. It's not, it's frankly not that hard to get or to pass things through senate, because you can literally, you know, ask one of the student trustees or you can email one of the student senate advisors, the process.
Sorry, you cut off.
Am I kind of? Um, sorry, so.
Sorry, Mr. Faruk, Mr. Faruk, sorry to interrupt. Could you start over? You cut out halfway through.
My bad, it's probably my hearing aids dying. So I'm on student senate, I'm good friends with trustee Guber here, and I did co-chair the personal finance committee. It, it's not so much that there's an implementation, you know, problem or that there's an actual structural problem. Again, we feel it's just a culture and it's deliberate ignorance that comes from the top down. I'm kind of going in circles here at this point, you know, it's, it's not anything wrong with the process, because we do have opportunities, we never said that, we do have opportunities for our voices to be highlighted, but we feel that our voices, when they are highlighted, they're not really taken into account. That's, that's all, that's the only point that we're trying to make.
Yeah, and I will.
I do have a follow-up, Mr. Chair.
Sorry, trustee Roche, I think there was another delegate who wanted to add to that statement?
Yeah, sorry, I was just going to add. I, I agree with Fake, I, I don't think there are any issues with the senate itself. I think, again, we are kind of running in circles. When, when it comes to issues that the students feel are really affecting them directly, such as the pride flag, at the meetings regarding it, there were many delegations declined because of the numbers, the sheer numbers of people. So again, that's how kind of the, the other disconnect, they feel that their voice isn't being heard. Yeah.
Thank you. Trustee Roche, do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and through you. The other question, do you see as a student trustees, is there something that we can improve on in order for us to get more voices of the students heard? Because we do try, we do try to hear as many students as we could and bring as many voices as we can to the table. It's just kind of difficult. So do you see anything that we could improve in order for us to bring more voices to the table?
We're not so much going against the student trustees as we're with and for the student trustees as well. I think you guys are doing a great job and frankly, you, trustee Kelly and trustee Guber do re, re-engaged with students. And I think that it's not so much something that you can do, but maybe something that we can change within board meetings or something that we can change with the actual trustees of the binding vote, that they can take into account the voices of the elected student trustees a little better, or sideline you as much, because I make examples, but you got, and this is something that I've been told, you know, every year for the last, almost three years now, so.
Thank you. So up next, we have trustee Agnew, followed by trustee Guzzo, then trustee Intomasi. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor?
Thank you very much and through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the students for coming and delegating this evening. And I don't want to run around in circles, because I know that you've been asked numerous times this evening with respect to processes and having your voice heard. But I, I would like, from your perspective, perhaps some tangible suggestions of, is there other ways that we could be doing this? I, I know that we have committees, I know we have student trustees, we have the student senate. Perhaps this isn't all procedural, as we said, this is somewhat cultural. But do you have other suggestions or other tangible mechanisms that we can look at to better, to better solicit student voice, to, to better act on that, to take it into consideration, you know, more frequently, more consistently in the decision-making? Because that's what I'm hearing, is, is what's happening. And so I would love to know, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I would love to know if you have, you know, some other ideas of how this might be able to work a little bit better. And I'm specifically thinking about, you know, when you mentioned about some of the students at, you know, the, the level down here that have to go through a bunch of hurdles, let's say, and somewhere along the way, their voice or several voices, you know, are, are negated or are dropped. So I would love to hear that, if you are able to answer that.
Can I have a point of order?
What's your point of order, trustee Careball?
I understand the question is very interesting in that I'm just wondering if it's beyond the scope of a question of clarification on the particular delegation?
I, I don't believe it is, because it is, it really is the, the core and the heart of the delegation, which is student trustees asking, trust, sorry, student, the student delegates, the student council, asking trustees to self-examine the, the current structure. So I, I think it's within order.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think I can speak to this one. The biggest thing, so what we had an issue with, Jack and Emma and I, is delegations are a little bit hard to get around, and we don't have a lot of procedural experience and, you know, this is somewhat our first times going to this. So we had only a couple of days of the delegation, and when we got denied for the delegation, we actually got denied 1:00 PM the day after, not even on the day of. So we effectively had probably 10 or 12 hours to the delegation, and we ended up handing it on Monday. But I think just making or streamlining that delegation process and making it very clear that what you can or cannot do in the delegation, because we were never told, you know, you can't repeat processes, you can't repeat decisions or things that were brought up in delegations. Another thing is, I know you guys do do a lot of student and stakeholder surveys for major decisions like naming schools or demographic surveys, but you could, you know, make this a effective direct democracy or, you know, make it cognizant that you're actually quantifying student voice and you, maybe you could do a referendum on several issues like the pride flag, or you could, you know, have people come up and engage sort of the, the issues that people are, are, are feeling about in the actual schools itself. So I think just quantifying what people actually want, rather than having students come to you guys and putting the burden of proof on the students themselves, because again, you know, this is 16 and 17, is what we're talking about. It, it is difficult for us to sort of go through this process, so maybe remove some of the burden of proof from us and, and maybe you can help engage a little bit more with it. So that's, that, those are our suggestions with it.
Yeah, I'll add actually to Fake. I think what he's saying is, is really important when it comes to the delegation process. There's a lot of hoops you have to jump through, all that kind of thing. But another thing that you could do is kind of pay attention to what's going on outside of the school board, in, in, in the schools, in media, in social media. And if there's an issue that's a really popular one and a really big issue that seems to be catching a lot of attention with a large group and a large population of parents and students in the board, maybe the meeting, that meeting that discusses it has to take more time, maybe there has to be more delegations on it, if you're not going to allow delegations after, even at this meeting. If there could be less time on process and more time on delegations, especially the beginning, we were delayed in starting. So if there could be less process and more delegations, especially when it comes to issues that are popular, I know that within the board, there seems to be a trend of a lot of people not, not really paying attention or caring about the media outside, the narrative that's happening outside the school board, and that's fine. But I think there needs to be more of a focus on it and just to find out what are the, what are the major issues that are really impacting people and how they're feeling? And, and do we need to focus more on it? Maybe have more delegations, more surveys, that kind of thing. It doesn't have to be on every issue, but it does have to be on some of them.
Trustee Agnew, do you have a follow-up?
I, I do. Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to, for those suggestions. And, and what I would just encourage is, you know, to continue to find, whether it's through your student trustees, whether you're, you know, through your trustees directly, through your student trustees, whoever that might be through. If you can continue to share some of these ideas on different things that we can be looking at or we can be doing, or this board can be doing to better, to better listen to student voice, to better engage the students with student voice, I think we do a good job in a number of different ways. But if you can continue to provide us, you know, with some of those ideas for us to consider and implement, that would be really, really helpful. And thank you for the ones that you've presented so far. Appreciate it.
Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Again, thank you for answering all these questions. You mentioned that the student voice felt that they'd been ignored. Can you give me an example or let me know what the response was that you heard from, from your student body that you were representing when this decision was made?
Yeah, I actually resigned over this decision from my own student council president and from our bishop writing. And, you know, a lot of people, I think I got close to 100, 150 DMs on Instagram and Snap and whatever, coming out in support and saying, you know, you made the right decision, we're, we're totally in support of this. When you put your thumb on the student body and you put, you, you're cognizant of what they're thinking, a lot of students nowadays are progressive-minded individuals, and I think there was a little bit of a backlash and disappointment behind that decision. If you look at the recent social media posts, actually, like the one that we released last night, that Jack was talking about, there is like upwards of 300, 400 comments on that, absolutely just flaming that, you know, flaming the actual post itself and the hypocrisy that went behind the decision to make the post. So I think the students really, really, really did not like the pride decision and it's, it's maybe made not so aware, since they, they're more on the ground and grassroots level and they don't have the opportunity to delegate in this manner, even though they can, but they, maybe they choose not to, maybe they don't have the time to. So if you really do put the, like, thumb on the student population and stakeholders and even lots of teachers, there was, we did feel that we were disappointed with the decision made and that our voices weren't assigned. And I think there was a recent survey done and like 400 people said, you know, like 214 past students and everything said they didn't agree with the decision and they were disappointed with the stakeholders in the board for making that decision as well. There was also an open letter to actually, Mr. Daley, to raise a flag as well, which I think wasn't really taken into account, and maybe that was backtracked a little or sidetracked a little. So maybe there's another example for you, so.
Just want to add something here. I just feel, and I know, like, throughout all of the schools, I felt the students really felt like that they didn't belong and that they were really neglected by the board, just based solely on this decision. And knowing the student population and things, I think just based on this decision, they just really felt as if they didn't belong, and that goes completely against like the board logo of achieving, believing and belonging. So I think it was kind of counterproductive in that way as well.
And I think there was an even larger disconnect in that, and that was the fact that the teachers and admin in every single school in our board were so supportive of it. And the board just continued to, what felt like not just ignoring students, but ignoring teachers and ignoring admin as well. So it, it makes, it, it shows that for the students, if they see that their admin and teachers are doing something and they're not being heard by the board, that to them makes it seem like there's no chance for them to have a word.
Thank you. Trustee Guzzo, did you have a follow-up?
Just that, I guess what you're saying, and correct me if I'm wrong and I'm hearing it loud and clear, is that the decision we make here.
it loud and clear, is that the decision we make here, we're not recognizing the impact it has on, directly on you as students. And it wasn't reflective of what the student voice wanted. Would that be an accurate question?
On average, within a sample size of a population, about 4% to 5% of people are identified as LGBT. I think, going back to trustee DeRosa's word, 0.6% of people is a lot when you're referencing gifted slash IEP students. When you're talking about, you know, 10 times that number, that's a monumental number that we're talking about, especially in a board that's like 30,000 to 35,000 students. So when you're sidelining, like, 1 out of 20 students in a board, there is a significant disconnect in what we want and what we believe as allies, and what the decision was made by leadership. So going back to your question, yeah, we do agree with that.
Thank you, and thank you for coming and delegating this evening.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. Up next, we have trustee Antomasi, followed by vice chair Duarte, followed by trustee DeRosa. Trustee Antomasi, you have the floor?
I yield my questions to vice chair Duarte.
Thank you. Vice chair Duarte, you have the floor?
Mr. Chair, I have a question, based on what I'm hearing, I have a question for staff, actually. And maybe somebody can let me know.
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
What point of order, trustee Guzzo?
We're on the questions to delegates in regards to their delegation. This isn't a time for asking staff.
Let's listen to vice chair Duarte's question first, and then your point, then I can rule on your point. Vice chair Duarte, what's your question?
My question is regarding student voice, and exactly what the students are talking about. What mechanisms do we have in place to absorb the information that the students are giving and pass it on to trustees, so that we can hear better, listen better to them? Because we do not have a direct relationship to students. We get information from staff, and so what mechanisms do we have?
Okay, so trustee Guzzo, I find that the question is in order.
I'm sorry. So we're, so we're, sorry, just to understand, so you're ruling that we're allowing questions of staff during a delegation?
Yes, I believe we have, and I think it's, I think it's an important, there's important information there, and if you'd like to appeal my decision, you can do that.
I would, Mr. Chair, I don't normally, but I'm going to appeal your decision.
Okay. So we're voting, they're voting to not allow vice chair Duarte's question, if you accept the appeal. Trustee Guzzo, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Carabao?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hearn-Turnata?
Opposed.
Trustee Guber?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Rashdi?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
Opposed.
Vice chair Duarte? And trustee Murphy is opposed, so the question is in order. Director Daley, you have the floor?
I'll try. Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, thanks for the question, trustee Duarte, thanks to our three student representatives for delegating tonight. I think, I think the students probably describe what's kind of the structural process that's in place right now, and I'll talk more at the secondary level than at elementary. Each of our secondary schools has some form of student government, student council, and those positions are decided at the school level. Student senate then takes representatives from each of the high schools to sit at the student senate level, so that's student senators, student trustees, and then staff advisors. So in terms of information or, yeah, I guess, information or concerns, if they were, if it was beyond a school-level concern and more systemic, it would go from school council to student senate, and then hopefully, ultimately, through our student trustees to the board level. That would be one mechanism to do. I think, if I may, I think Mr. Faruk's point about, and I think Mr. Kukletu talked about the delegation process, and maybe some of those procedures are not well-known to students, the preparation for it, or some of the advocacy that can be done through that means. I think that would certainly be something that, you know, staff could take away in terms of some professional development that we could help provide with our student leaders. We have talked about at our senior staff table, about trying to strike a staff working committee around the various, both formal and kind of student-generated leadership groups that come up, to both better, maybe help them out in terms of understanding or taking advantage of some of those processes, and also from a board perspective, to try and kind of hear those voices separately, but also to bring them together. I met with this couple of students a few weeks ago regarding a student-led equity group, really kind of grassroots, it came from the school level, and I think we have lots of those types of groups, student groups, in the board, and I think they can be supported maybe in a different way than we have in the past.
Thank you, Director Daley. Vice chair Duarte, did you have a follow-up question? Thank you. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I have a question for, I'm sorry, your last, for Jack, his last name escapes me, I don't have it on the screen, so my apologies. Did you know that my reference in the prior meeting of two, reference to 230 gifted students actually referred only to the high school students? When you put all of the gifted students, the number is actually closer to 500 than probably 2%. And I would not, I would not certainly minimize even one student for any other issue, including the flag issue, as being insignificant.
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Yes, what's your point of order?
Is this a question, a clarifying question for the delegation?
Yes, it is. So.
I didn't hear a question, sorry.
Please, no cross-talk. Trustee DeRosa, can you state your question?
So my question was in my, in my previous dissertation, but I'll repeat it. Does Jack know that the 230 students that I referred to, and he referred to a few times tonight, only.
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
High school.
Okay, so trustee DeRosa, let's allow the delegate to answer your question.
I can answer that question, yeah. So the, we understand that, yes, it was referring to the high school students, so that's our bad, but again, as Nancy said, the point was not dismiss the number as being a large group. So forget the percentages for a moment, but if 230 or 238 kids is a lot of kids, then more than 238 kids who identify as part of the 2S LGBTQ+ community is also a lot of kids, and they should be addressed as such, especially on such a popular issue.
May I have a follow-up?
Yes, please ask your question.
My question is the following, to acknowledge the fact that it is a lot of kids on both sides, for any argument. Thank you.
Trustee DeRosa, that wasn't a question. Up next, we have trustee Agnew.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So since we're possibly able to ask clarifying questions, then of staff around the delegation, I do have a question with respect to the roles. So when we talk about student senate, I'm just trying to understand some of the way that the messaging moves through, and who's a conduit for that. So, you know, what role would the superintendents and, you know, what would they, what role would they play with respect to student senate, or for the principals? What role would they play? And I'm wondering, it's specific to a comment that was made earlier in the delegation about a letter that they had published on behalf of all of the student senate leaders, and it was taken down only off one site. So I, so I think that's part of their issue, is that, you know, that's where they're feeling like there was a bit of censorship going on there. So what's that process? Like, it doesn't seem to be consistent, so perhaps maybe someone on staff could answer that for me.
Director Daley?
Yeah, I don't think I'd specifically speak to an incident at one school where a post was asked to be taken down, or a post was taken down. That would be, you know, how a school uses its, its school website, Twitter, whatever the medium is, that would be a process followed at the school level. And I guess the fact that it happened at one school as opposed to the other eight schools would be indicative of that.
Trustee Agnew, do you have a follow-up?
No, I don't. It's fine, I can, I can have this conversation later on. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other trustees who wish to speak, so I would like to thank our, trustee Guzzo, is that, did you sneak in there?
Yes, sorry, the laptops are giving me a hard time this evening, so.
You have the floor, please go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. So one of the comments that was made was about the student trustee, when they, not the student trustees, because I think our student trustees do a fabulous job, unfortunately, we just haven't been able to hear from them for a while, but the student senate meetings, one of the comments made, and I think it was Jack, that said, ideas are brought up, and then they're pushed aside. I'm just trying to understand, and I guess it's two parts, is one, from it's from the delegation, from Jack, is what exactly happens? And then two, what mechanism, and then the question to staff would be, what mechanism do we have that, like, who translate what's happening at student, student senate to the board, especially when it's pertaining to decisions that we're making here? Like, who communicates that piece to us?
Trustee Guzzo, who did, sorry, who did you direct that question to?
So there's two, two questions. The first one.
So let's do it first, okay?
So I think it was Jack who said that at student senate, when ideas are come up, that they're pushed aside, and I'm paraphrasing, I don't think that's exactly how he said it, but they, they're dismissed. If he could just elaborate on, on that, like, where's the dismissal coming from? Is it just that, is it a consensus? Is it the facilitators? If I can just understand that a little bit.
So it was from another student who attends the meetings often, that this came up from, that was directed towards me, and like, they were talking to me about it. And it seemed to be a bit of a culture as, and it was, it kind of felt as if they were just kind of being ignored in general. So they would bring up ideas, and particularly pertaining to green shirt day was the, was the issue they were talking about, and they felt as if the entire meeting was not a discussion, it was just a continuous running in circles of, we can't do that, we can't do that, even though it wasn't really, it's not a big deal, and the schools can do that if they want to, it's not really that big of a deal. So when it comes to a bigger issue, I think a lot of students feel they don't even want to go there, because if something as small as having students wear green shirts can't be tabled properly at the student senate, what's a, what's a pride flag going to do? What's something as big as that going to do there? Probably nothing, which is probably why you guys had so many delegations lining up to present at the board.
Thank you. And then my question to staff was, when things, items are discussed at student senate, how does that translate and brought to the board when we're making decisions that impact students?
Director Daley, did you want to answer that, or is?
I can't, partially. I know that when we, when we do hear our student trustee reports, oftentimes they do talk about what happened at student senate. Student trustees do have, I think, an integral part in that student senate role. Maybe one of our student trustees could address that.
Do we have a student trustee who would like to speak to that question?
I can speak to that, Mr. Chair.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. So in terms of the student senate, we do our best to ensure that each senator has the opportunity to voice their opinion. Any senator or school senate who would like to table a motion has free rein over that. They simply just contact us, and they can put whatever motion they'd like on the floor. We discuss it, and we take it to a vote, and then from there, it's kind of in the hands of us three student trustees to go about setting that up and bringing that to the board. In many cases, we have committees that we utilize to kind of help, you know, structure these initiatives and promote them within the board. And like Director Daley said, we do our best to report on them in our student trustee reports, but overall, we do take into account the majority of our student senators' voice. And our student senate constitution actually allows for non-student senators to delegate to us and have presentations. So that is, we have pretty much an open-door policy for our students to connect with us and express how they're feeling. I hope that clarifies things.
Thank you, trustee Guber. Seeing that there are no other questions from trustees, I would like to thank our delicate, our delegation, I'd like to thank you for advocating. I think you brought some really valid and important points. You know, it's, it's, I'm always impressed with, with our students when they come before us, even when they're criticizing me. You know, we need to be, we need to reflect and be uncomfortable to grow. So my takeaway, personally, the one small thing I can enact right away is to meet directly with student trustees on a regular basis, which we wait for their report, and, and I think it was Mr. Faruk said, is taking accountability for that, that portion of it, which, which instead of being reactive and waiting for students to, student trustees to come to me with a problem, I should be seeking that out and seeking, seeking guidance from them. So I have taken that to heart, and I appreciate your constructive criticism, and look forward to growing from this, from this experience. So we will, we will deal with your response to delegation under agenda item 8.1. Thank you again. We are moving on to delegation 5.3, cancellation of pre-AP grade 9 math. The next delegation is from the Quinn family. Do we have the Quinn family on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
You have the floor, please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Director Daley, Chair Murphy, Board of Trustees, student trustees, and staff members of the Halton Catholic District School Board. My name is Maria Quinn, and I have four children that attend school in the Halton Catholic District School Board system. I would like to speak to you this evening with regards to the cancellation of the pre-AP math program. I have two daughters that are currently attending Holy Trinity High School, and they will also be speaking to you directly about their experience in the pre-AP program. Both were enrolled in pre-AP math program, and back in November of 2020, my third daughter applied, was accepted, and subsequently enrolled to begin pre-AP courses in English, science, and math this upcoming September. On April 30th of 2021, I received communication of the cancellation of the Advanced Placement Grade 9 Math Program, with reasons given that the math was being de-streamed at the provincial level. The email stated that the change was under the direction of the Ministry of Education. At the time, I was extremely disappointed that the program would no longer be offered, but realized there was nothing to be done, as it was a ministry-wide mandate. Why then, pardon me, I was very disappointed to, I was very disappointed to find out that this in fact was not the case. The ministry's mandate to destream grade 9 math only applies to the applied and academic courses. So why then did the board include the AP and the IB math programs? Why were parents and students not informed of this change, and given the opportunity to discuss and provide feedback on the program well before the April 30th date of this year? As a parent with two children who have benefited immensely from the grade 9 pre-AP program, I am. I am frustrated that this drastic curriculum change has been decided upon at such a late date and without any parent or student consultation. While I understand the issue of addressing systemic discrimination and providing a level playing field for all students, this change will do a great disservice to those children who need to be challenged. I also believe it will not help the children who require additional supportive learning environment in order to succeed. With the change being made only two months before the end of the school year, how will teachers be prepared to teach the kids of all levels, all in one classroom? What will the students who were previously expecting to be taught at a grade nine pre-AP level have to do in order to be challenged? And how do we expect these students to be prepared for the grade 10 pre-AP math curriculum? My daughters both described pre-AP math as math and fast forward. The same topics may have been taught at the academic level, however, the pace of teaching and learning is at a very accelerated pace. Are we now to expect these students to take it upon themselves to participate in extra work, most likely during after-school hours, in order to reach the level of knowledge required to succeed? As a concerned parent, I'm asking for trustees to require the director to immediately reinstate pre-AP IB grade nine math in all schools where they were previously offered for students already registered and keep the full pre-AP program offerings at Holy Trinity in the years to come. I'm just going to pass the floor over to my daughter Adeline Quinn.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you today. My name is Adeline Quinn and I'm a grade 12 student at Holy Trinity Catholic Secondary School. I was lucky to be a part of the first students enrolled in the pre-advanced placement program when I started in high school in grade nine in September of 2017. I enrolled in pre-AP math, English, and Science classes, and my other core courses were part of the French immersion program. I'm here today to advocate on behalf of my younger sister, who is a grade A student at St. Marguerite du Ville. She applied in November and was accepted into the pre-AP math program at Holy Trinity this February. Last week, we found out that Holy Trinity and the Halton Catholic District School Board had canceled pre-AP math for grade nine. And I am asking that you reconsider this decision and keep all pre-AP programs for students like me and my sisters who would benefit from these classes. I didn't think that I would ever be speaking in support of extra math, but I know that I wouldn't be here, I know that I wouldn't be where I am today without it. The pre-AP program challenged me and helped me find my interest in STEM programs. I admit that the work was hard and the pace was fast, but I know that I'm a better student because of it and better prepared for the work that I will be expected to do in the future. Next September, I will start university with a STEM major and most of my courses will be in math and science. Without pre-AP math in grade nine, I know that my sister will not have the same advantages that I did. Without this intensive programming grade nine, it will be much harder for her to catch up to the demands of the program in later years. And she may be more reluctant to choose AP math after a year in a de-streamed program that will not provide her with the same intellectual challenges and pace of the pre-AP program. Without the AP, the AP program was a great addition to the offerings at Holy Trinity. The goal of de-streaming grade nine math was to help students get ahead who may be behind. In the case of my sister, canceling AP math would be hindering her progress. I don't think that this was the intention of the board in canceling the program, but I know that I, that this would be the result. Please keep pre-AP math in all grade nine pre-AP programs at Holy Trinity. I can tell you that the program works and canceling grade nine pre-AP math will not help my sister and can only hurt her chances of success in the future. Thank you. And we'll now pass it forward to my sister Charlotte.
Thank you very much for letting me be a delegate today. My name is Charlotte Quinn and like my sister, I am enrolled in the pre-AP programs at Holy Trinity. I am the second of four girls in our family. Adelaide was a great role model for me in taking on the challenges of the pre-AP program and getting involved in STEM. I recently finished the grade 10 pre-AP math course and achieved a final mark of 100%. Without having gone through the grade nine pre-AP work, I would not have been as successful in grade 10. Please take into consideration the views of my sister and I who have gone through this program. No board members or superintendents or teachers or parents have taken these courses, but we have. Pre-AP grade nine math is hard work and I think it should be hard work. I worry that a de-streamed grade nine math program will slow down the progress for my sister and make math harder for her in grade 10. Pre-AP math has helped me to be a better student. If I was in a de-streamed math program in grade nine, I know that I would not have done as well as I have in grade 10. Please reinstate the pre-AP program for my sister and her fellow AP students for the next year and beyond. Hopefully, it will still be there in two years for my youngest sister if she's a candidate for the program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you to the Quinn family for your presentation. Are there any questions from trustees for clarification purposes? Vice Chair Duarte, you have the floor.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Quinn family, once again, and very well done. My question here is regarding, actually, it goes to, to the older Quinn, Adeline. Yeah, so the question here is, you said you were the first batch of students which went to the pre-AP program. So the question is, was it your parents who encouraged you to go to the program? Or was it your teachers or was it your burning desire to succeed?
Hi, so for me personally, it was all of my own decision. When we did course selection, we did get a recommendation for where we should be from our teachers, but I, the program was so attractive to me that I really wanted to do it myself. It wasn't the push of my parents, it wasn't the push of my teachers. It really was kind of my desire to get that sort of advanced learning from that AP program because I know that I was very fortunate to go to a school that provided something like that. And there's always an option that if it was too hard for me, that I could drop out, but I could never go back into the program if I had never tried it in the first place. So I wanted to give it a go, see how it went. And if it wasn't not fit for me, I can drop it. But it was all sort of my own decision to get into that program. And I think it should be everyone's decision to make, to have that choice in grade nine to take pre-AP math.
Vice Chair Duarte, you have a follow up?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have a follow up. Again, continuation of the question is, you said you love the program and you love the STEM part of it and stuff like that. So where do you see yourself going with the AP, the, what you gained in the AP programs? Where do you see, where do you see taking yourself in, in future life? How is it going to benefit you?
Well, I think that it's already sort of set me up for my first year in university because once you obtain that AP credit, it is credible at some universities, depending on where your program, where you get accepted to. But even if it isn't, you are learning university math, for example, or university level questions and curriculum. So I think that it's probably making it easier for myself in, in my transition to university, that it gives me a little bit of a head start, gives me more knowledge, that I don't need to go into my programs, which are known to be very competitive, which are known to be very hard for first-year university students. If I go into that already knowing some of the things that I need to learn, it's kind of giving me a one-up on everyone else.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you, through Mr. Chair, to Mrs. Quinn. Mrs. Quinn, you mentioned that the Ministry's mandate to de-stream grade nine math only applies to applied and academic courses, correct?
Correct, that is what I said.
How do you know that?
The reason I know that is because, first of all, I've heard that other boards are still offering the pre-AP and IB programs to their schools. So it's not just our board. And I also spoke, or pardon me, I also know that Maria Larenco spoke to a superintendent who confirmed it. And I also was told that Jessica Lim spoke to the Ministry and they confirmed it as well.
Thank you.
Trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow up?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other trustees who have questions? No, seeing that there are none, I'd like to thank the Quinn family for your presentation. And we will deal with it, with your delegation under item 8.1. Thank you. Up next, we have 5.4, cancellation of the pre-AP grade nine math. We have Ms. Gorgi, hopefully I pronounced your name correctly. You have 10 minutes for your presentation. Please begin.
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening, Director Daly, Chair Murphy, Board of Trustees, student trustees, and staff members of HCDSP. I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Ullana Gorgi and I'm a concerned parent of three children currently attending both an elementary and a high school within the Halton Catholic School System. This is my first delegation. I was shocked and saddened when I first read an email coming from an advanced placement address on April 30th of this year informing parents that grade nine pre-AP math would be de-streamed. It stated, and I quote, "A recent change has been initiated by the Ministry of Education to the grade nine math curriculum for this coming September. For grade nine students across Ontario, de-streamed math would now replace the advanced placement academic and applied streams. Since it was presented to us, parents, as coming from the Ministry of Education, I felt I had little to no recourse on the matter. After speaking to a few other concerned parents, I soon came to learn that the Ministry of Education only mandated that the applied and academic grade nine math be de-streamed and that the HCDSP staff made a board-level decision to also allow both the AP and IB programs as well, without consulting relevant stakeholders. I sincerely hope that a Catholic school system didn't knowingly try to deceive the parents of pre-AP or IB hopeful students by making it seem that this was government mandated. I completely understand the need to dismantle systemic discrimination and structural inequalities within the educational system. I also agree that sadly, some students have been historically underserved in the school system and it is vital for them to get help. My fear, however, is that students who are already strong in the subject will be negatively impacted and disadvantaged in a de-streamed system of learning, especially when mixing children who are struggling in the applied stream with children excelling in the pre-AP curriculum. The spectrum is just too large. By including the AP students in the mix, you will not only disadvantage them, but they are likely to become bored, disengaged, and hindered in their mathematical skills development. I speak from experience, having had my oldest child attend and thrive at a pre-AP math. He described his teachings as challenging, stimulating, and fun. He enjoyed the pace of the program and the depth of learning it allowed. When speaking to friends and comparing his experiences to the academic stream of math, he described his classes as moving at lightning speed. I can only assume that in a de-streamed system, teachers will surely need to teach the lowest learning capacity in order to ensure that all children understand the lesson and that no child is left behind. In such an environment, students intending on doing their studies at the pre-AP level will not be engaged, challenged, nor adequately prepared for a grade 10 pre-AP curriculum the following year. I sincerely doubt teachers, now no matter how qualified or how experienced, will be able to teach to all levels of student capacity and definitely not move, as my son put it, at lightning speed. I have another child entering grade nine in the fall. He too has an affinity for math, was initially accepted into the pre-AP math program and was excited to be challenged by the pre-AP curriculum, just as his older brother was. I speak to you tonight not only on behalf of my son, but of all students who have a passion for math, want to achieve more, and will undoubtedly be disadvantaged in a de-streamed system. Other boards, such as the neighboring Dufferin-Peel Catholic District School Board, the Peel District School Board, and the York Catholic District School Board, all have opted to keep the pre-AP grade nine math program as is. As I understand it, it is within your purview to course correct. Allow the pre-AP and IB math programs to send in the Halton Catholic District School Board and by doing so, empowering these students to achieve their fertile mathematical potential. I ask for trustees to please direct the director to immediately reinstate the pre-AP IB grade nine math in all schools where they were previously offered and for students already registered. September is such a short time away. I thank you for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Gorgi. We have some question, or some trustees lined up for questions. Vice Chair Duarte, followed by trustee Agnew. Vice Chair Duarte, you have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Gorgi, and I can do the second one. My question here is, you did, you said in your presentation that you got a letter from the school that the program was canceled and indeed, your child did get into the AP program, you have a letter to verify. So was explained to you how the program, this team program would be run with your child present in a class with the stream students? Any communication?
So first, it was two different emails. The first email, and I don't recall when, was that my child was accepted into the AP program. And then on April 30th, I received an email from an email address that just basically said advanced placement. And it basically said, I mean, I had read the original quote, that the Ministry of Education is now de-streaming and that the applied, advanced placement, and academic streams are going to be all part of it. I was upset, so my first instinct was to actually email the principal of my son's school and I had asked them, you know, what does this exactly mean? And I'm, you know, disappointed because my other son had gone through the program. I basically got, you know, an answer that said, don't worry, our student, our teachers, sorry, are, you know, very well educated and have a lot of experience and basically they'll be able to handle it. So just knowing from what my son had gone through, I just think it would be really difficult for any teacher, no matter what kind of superstar he or she is, to be able to teach to kids that, you know, are really struggling in the applied area of math with kids that are, you know, zooming through math and want to be constantly challenged with more difficult, you know, studies. So that's kind of where it was at.
Vice Chair Duarte, you have a follow up?
Yes, Mr. Chair. And, and the thing is, are you comfortable with that kind of communication? Or were you expecting something more, some more details on how the program would be run and what it would mean for your child?
Well, at first, when I didn't realize that AP didn't have to be a part of it, my question was, well, how are the teachers exactly going to do this? Like, we're hearing that classroom sizes are even getting bigger. I'm also hearing that there's an opportunity that online learning is still going to take place. So even in an online learning environment in the first trimester of school, how is a teacher really going to be able to make sure that each child isn't left behind? And like, and bringing, like I had said in part of my presentation, I think they'll have to teach to the lowest mathematical capability. Because if some students are still struggling with even things like multiplication and are not understanding that concept, how can you possibly go on? So the kids that are able to take on more are just going to become disengaged and not be challenged? And then I worry basically about, you know, fast forward four years when they're going into and trying to compete into university level, when you have the, the York District School Board and the Peel District School Board and even the Dufferin-Peel Catholic School Board giving those kids that opportunity, how are our kids in Halton going to compete, you know, for those placements in university?
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have trustee Agnew.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for your delegation. I don't have a lot of complicated questions, but the, the one thing I'm trying to understand a little bit more about, because I can understand how this did come as a shock and I'm a parent myself, so I can understand how, when you receive that information, expecting one thing and finding out something different. So can you just confirm for me again, who the email came from on the 30th? So you received an email saying that your child had been accepted into AP and then you got a subsequent email on the 30th saying that this is the situation that was transpiring? Who did that correspondence come from? Sorry.
There was a lot of, there was probably a few months in between. I don't recall when my child was, I think it might have been January, but don't go beyond that. You know, so he got accepted, we were all yay. And then on April 30th, I mean, I can try to even look up the email in my system. It was from some applied, like, AP email address.
Okay.
That just basically was just telling all parents, by the way, you know, it's ministry mandated and now, you know, there's going to be no more AP math. So it was just very, very shocking and disappointing.
For sure. Okay, thank you. I just wanted some clarity around that because it did. I just wanted some clarity around that, because it did seem like it sort of came out of nowhere.
For me, it came out of nowhere, like.
Yeah.
And I tried to keep on top of all the emails from school.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you so much. Yep.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien, then Trustee DeRosa.
I have a follow-up, Mr. Chair.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I thought you were done.
That's okay. My follow-up is actually to staff, if that's okay.
Yes, if it relates to the content of the delegation?
Yeah, it does. So I'm just wondering if someone on staff, and I'm not sure who that could be, could clarify where, you know, when that correspondence went out? Who sent it? And who it was sent to? Because there's a number of people I've heard from that, this is the first they're hearing of it. They didn't receive any correspondence to that matter. They had no idea that this was happening. I don't think that the trustees had been notified. So I'm just wondering who sent out that correspondence and when that was sent out and to who it went to, if that's okay?
Director Daly, would that be yourself or Superintendent Kroll?
Actually, I think it'd be Superintendent Cordero could probably help with when the correspondence was sent out. I do believe it was April 30th. I believe it went out from the school level, but Superintendent Cordero might be able to give us some information on that.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Trustee Agnew, for the question. The communication went out to parents, families of students who had been accepted into the pre-IB and pre-AP math programs commencing September 2021. That date of the letters that were distributed to those families was April 29th. I could perhaps try to clarify some of the questions, queries, or statements earlier, if given the opportunity.
Yes, if it would help maybe for subsequent questions that would be coming. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the advanced placement pre-AP and pre-IB math programs in Grade Nine have, to this date, been taught within an advanced or in an academic class. The advanced placement pre-AP and pre-IB math programs will continue to be delivered, but they will be delivered in the new de-streamed math program that is being unveiled by the Ministry of Education. So the difference is, whereas up to now, pre-AP was delivered in only an academic-level class, it will be delivered to all students who seek those opportunities in a de-streamed Grade Nine math curriculum. So instead of perhaps, maybe at Holy Trinity, a class or two of academic students having access to pre-AP math curriculum extensions, those pre-AP math curriculum extensions will now be made available to all students in a de-streamed program. So there is no cancellation of pre-AP math. It is simply delivered in a de-streamed math class as opposed to the previous academic math class. As to pre-AP and AP programs, there never has been a pre-AP Grade Nine, Ten, or Eleven AP credit, nor is there a Grade Twelve AP credit. All credits that have been afforded students taking a pre-AP or AP math program in Grade Twelve and Grade Nine to Grade Eleven, all students have always received an academic credit. The academic program is curriculum that is developed by the Ministry of Education in Ontario. The AP Extension Curriculum is developed by the AP College Board, which is officed in British Columbia, Canada, and is a subsidiary to the AP College Board in the United States. There are no AP credits that go off to university. Those students who receive AP standing are those who write the AP exam in Grade Twelve, or if they're ambitious, in Grade Eleven, and receive a Level Four or Level Five in a scale of one to five, five being the highest, where a university could grant that student a credit in year one for that subject that the student writes their AP exam and achieves a Level Four or Five. Even in the context of non-AP students, so students who have never taken pre-AP math or pre-AP science or the Grade Twelve AP curriculum within the Grade Twelve university-level program, students at Notre Dame, students at St. Thomas Aquinas, students at other schools, Corpus Christi, who are never part of these AP programs, have always had the opportunity to also write the AP exam in Grade Twelve, many of whom have been very successful in writing their exams solely on the good work of the teachers in the delivery of the academic and the university-level programs conducted in those schools. And we have had students who have moved on to university with an advanced placement accreditation for a score of Four or Five, who've never been part of either the AP program at Holy Trinity Assumption or Bishop Reading. So the current difference between pre-AP now and in the past number of years and pre-AP as is projected for September 2021 is that the program will be delivered within a de-streamed class, open and available to all students as opposed to an exclusive academic class.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Cordero. Let's try and refocus on the, very good information, by the way, but we'll refocus on the delegation. Trustee Agnew, was that your first or your second question?
I'm done. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Yeah, Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor. And, yeah, sorry, go ahead. Trustee O'Brien, if you're speaking, you're muted. I may have cut you off and threw off your rhythm.
No, thank, no worries, Mr. Chair. Thank you through, Mr. Chair, to Ms. Gorgi. Ms. Gorgi, you mentioned in your delegation, you said, "My fear, however, is that children who are already strong in the subject will be negatively impacted and disadvantaged in a de-streamed system of learning, especially when mixing children who are struggling in applied stream." This fear that you have of this happening, do you have some experience with that? Say, in elementary, have your children experienced that in an elementary class where the teacher did teach to a lower-skilled student at the expense of a higher-skilled students? Do you have personal experience, you or your children?
Yes, actually. So before my children entered St. Marguerite in Oakville, I had them in Montessori before they entered Grade One. So by the time they came to St. Marguerite, the Montessori was wonderful, and they actually already understood multiplication and division. Coming into Grade One, they started to learn simple addition and single and double-digit addition. My kids were bored for the first couple of years, and they, you know, were rolling their eyes. And so, and it was just difficult to keep them engaged. As the grades progressed, it got better, and, you know, and they're doing well, and I'm very proud of them. But I just fear, again, what may happen once now. You know, the high school years are very important. And with all due respect to Superintendent, I can only speak to what I hear back from my son. He had told me that his entire class was an AP classroom, and he has friends outside, of course, of that classroom. And his friends, some of his friends, were in the academic classroom. So they would talk and chat and going, "What are you learning?" And so when he would find out what they were learning, he was like, "Oh, wow, Mom, we did that like three weeks ago." And then later, it's like, "Whoa, my gosh, we did that." And so they were just going a lot faster. So I am not sure. I'm not a teacher. I'm not in the system. All I know is what I am told by my son. And everybody in his classroom was at an AP level. We were told he was in a pre-AP class, and apparently all the students were there. So, and I was also told that, you know, any child who finds that they're not able to handle that, they can always drop down to an academic-level classroom. So my impression is that there are two distinct classrooms being taught math at any grade level of the pre-AP and academic. And then, of course, there's the applied level. And if you start in academic, there's no way you can ever jump into pre-AP. So as one of the Quinn daughters had mentioned, it was her decision to start at the pre-AP, and it's almost like you start at the top. And if you feel that it's too stressful or you can't handle it, or for whatever reason you want to bow out, you always have that cushion of the academic level that you can go to and still head off to university.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee O'Brien, did you have a follow-up?
No, Mr. Chair, but I think I may jump back into the queue. Thanks.
Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Ms. Gorgi, thank you for your delegation tonight. A very simple question. You have, I believe you mentioned you have two children in the program. Is that correct?
So I have, I have three children altogether, and one is currently in Grade Eleven, and one is in Grade Eight heading into Grade Nine. And that's the child that had gotten into the pre-AP program originally.
So can you help me understand if your older child will be affected by this decision at all?
I don't believe the Grade Eleven child will be affected at all because he's currently in the program. And this is only, the de-streaming is only happening at the Grade, sorry, at the Grade Nine level. So I'm just currently worried about my middle child that is heading off in September.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, can I have a question for maybe Director Daly? And he can direct it to whoever might want to answer it.
Yes, if it is regarding the content that was discussed in the delegation, yes.
It certainly is, Mr. Chair. Director Daly, I'd like to get a sense of how many people or how many students are in pre-AP will be affected by this transition?
I'm going to ask Superintendent Cordero. I think he can speak a little bit more specifically about pre-AP, pre-IB numbers, if that's okay?
Thank you.
Superintendent Cordero, can you answer that question? The number of students affected?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. And thank you, Mr. DeRosa, for your question. I'll share some data that I've collected for yourselves in preparation for this evening, if the question arose. So I'm glad I did my homework. We have a new pre-AP program starting in Grade Nine at Christ the King in Georgetown. We currently have 70 students enrolled in that program. At Bishop Reading, that is our largest pre-AP group of students. In Milton, we have currently 157 students registered for that program. At Assumption Catholic Secondary School, the first school to initiate the AP program a year prior to Bishop Reading and has had great success. They, you know, as well as the other schools, but they currently have 120 students in the pre-AP Grade Nine program entering in September, and Holy Trinity has 137. So in total, for the four pre-AP schools, we have 484 students out of the 2,564 students enrolled in our system in Grade Nine, which amounts to 18.9% of the student population. In terms of the pre-IB program in Grade Nine, we only have one school, St. Thomas Aquinas. We currently have 100 students enrolled in that program. And together, that population makes up approximately 4% of the student population. That program has recently seen a boost in numbers. Last year, we had 70 students enter the program, whereas now we have 100 students entering the program. If we look at the number of students in Grade Twelve who continue through the pre-AP Grade Nine, Ten, Eleven programs and take the pre-AP or the AP slash-university-level course in Grade Twelve and actually choose to write the advanced placement exams, which could elevate a student to receive advanced placement or a credit at the university level in their first year, of the 400, approximately 484 that enter the program, on average, 96 write the exam. So that represents 19.8% of the actual student body that enters AP in Grade Nine. And of the 19.8% of the 484, on average, that population, when compared to the entire student body across the system in that grade, amounts to 3.7%.
So Superintendent Cordero, Cordero, can I stop you there? You did give us a very fulsome answer, and time is running out for us. So I appreciate your answer. Thank you. And we'll now move on to Trustee O'Hearn-Turnata.
So I will now get my follow-up, Mr. Chair.
Trustee DeRosa, you had three questions. You can go back in the queue. Trustee O'Hearn-Turnata, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Ms. Gorgi. Thank you for your delegation. I just, I want to make sure you and I are on the same page for clarification. So with the de-streaming of Grade Nine math and the elimination of Grade Nine pre-AP math, my understanding now will be the class, Grade Nine math, will have AP students, that potentially would be an AP, current students that might be in the applied math and current students that might be in the academic math. Is that your understanding as well?
Personally, that is my understanding. I don't really know from the teachers or the schools yet of how exactly, you know, if all of a sudden the teacher may give the potential children who would have been in the pre-AP program all of a sudden extra work on the side or something. Like, I just, I don't know how it's going to look like. So I, I mean, like I said, I'm a parent, not a teacher, so I'm not very clear about how that would look like. I did want to just add, if I may, that some students I know also use the pre-AP, and it's not just for math, but for science or English. They start off with PAP in Nine, Ten, and Eleven, and sometimes they just basically drop down to the academic level by Grade Twelve as a strategy of, they have such a good experience with them, but they're so also nervous about getting very high grades at the university level that they would rather do the pre-AP for the first two or three years of their schooling in high school, and then drop down to academic and get a really good grade in academic, since they've already been accustomed to working at such a higher level. They almost find academic to be a little bit easier at that point. And so that way, they have an advantage and are able to secure really good grades, like even in the high 90s, and then be able to go on to higher education within universities. So I do know that some students are also really appreciate the program from that aspect.
Thank you, Ms. Gorgi, and that's why we're here. Can I have a follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, go ahead.
So through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Cordero, could you please clear that up for Ms. Gorgi and myself? So does this mean that we will have current situation, three streams of children in Grade Nine math with one teacher? Is that correct?
Well, yeah, you will have two streams, academic and applied, within a de-streamed class. And for those students, whether it be potentially applied-level students in the past or otherwise, or academic students in the past or otherwise, all those students will have an opportunity to add- an opportunity to access through differentiated instruction in the classroom, the pre-AP curriculum extensions. Further to that, we will be having a repository of resources for students and staff to access on a regular basis. And there will be after-school programs that will both help bridge the gap for students who might be struggling within different areas within math and opportunities for students to seek out those curriculum extensions to, to help facilitate, uh, a better preparation for pre-AP math in grade 10.
Okay, thank you. So I think I heard that, yes, current state, we would have one teacher with three different streams of children in one class. Correct?
Correct. And so again, pre-AP is not canceled. It is being offered through a D-streamed class as opposed to traditional academic class. And that's why the letter was referencing advanced play, uh, de-streaming, replacing academic math.
Okay. And, and I have another follow up, but I'll get back in the queue unless I can proceed.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Chair. And if you would indulge me to, uh, ask you a question to Superintendent Cordero. It is germane to the subject.
Uh, yes, as long as it relates to the content of the delegation.
I believe it does. Uh, three, Mr. Chair, two Superintendent Cordero. So Superintendent Cordero, you are then saying that the AP, pre-AP math for grade nine really has not been canceled? Is that correct?
It is simply being delivered within a de-streamed curriculum as opposed to the academic curriculum, which the Ministry of Education has replaced.
Okay, thank you. So I'm just a little confused because the, the communication that went out said, starting this September, um, de-streamed grade nine mathematics will now replace the AP preparation, academic and applied mathematics course. So the communication seems to say that the de-streaming will replace AP and you're saying that it never went in the first place. So I'm a little confused.
Okay, so the de-streamed math classes will replace previous academic classes, previous applied classes and previous academic classes that were clustered entirely of AP students delivering, uh, receiving pre-AP math curriculum extensions. So instead of an academic, let's say we'd have six academic classes at Holy Trinity and two of which would be, uh, populated by only pre-AP math students. Now you would have six de-streamed classes, all working from the same curriculum with students in each of those six classes receiving pre-AP math in that context. It is a little bit complicated. I do understand that, but it is, we're not, we're not canceling pre-AP math delivery. What we're now doing is delivering it within a de-streamed model as opposed to an academic model, which clustered those groups of, that group of students together.
Okay, trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow up?
Quick follow up. So previously, just to be clear, that all pre-AP, all grade nine pre-AP math students were together at one time in one class, separate from anyone else. Correct?
Correct. They were together in an academic class, separate from the other academic classes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll jump back in the queue.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I apologize. I, I had missed trustee Guzzo. So trustee Guzzo, you're next. Then Vice Chair Duarte, trustee DeRosa, trustee O'Hearn-Turnata, trustee Agnew and trustee O'Brien. My apologies, trustee Guzzo.
That's okay. Trustee Guzzo, trustee Agnew, I'm interchangeable. I guess I'm missable, so.
That, that hurts. I took that to heart.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so my question is, um, and I think it might be to Superintendent Cordero. Um, you mentioned about sending out the communication. Um, when was the discussion had to, to put the pre-AP math into this, this de-streaming incentive that has come from the government or direction that has come from the government, not incentive? Um, and who was consulted on that decision? And, uh, I, I understand that you communicated to the, the, the people who were accepted to it. But did we communicate it to the broader community, considering that people make plans to enter into this class? And it's something that we've, we've been, um, uh, how, at this course we've had for the last four years, should we not have maybe communicated it to the greater, broader community?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Miss, uh, trustee Guzzo for your question. Um, the, the, the district, the, the original press release by the Ministry of Education to move forward with de-streamed math was made July 9th of 2020. We had hoped that the Ministry of Education could provide school boards with the curriculum, uh, well in advance for staffs, curriculum, services, consultants to look at the curriculum and share those materials, those resources with, uh, teachers for professional development and share, uh, the intricacies of that curriculum and how pre-AP, uh, will tran, uh, will seamlessly transition within the curriculum to, to families. Unfortunately, the Ministry of Education has yet to present the de-streamed math curriculum to school boards. We reached the point where we've been providing staffs with, uh, professional development. There was a, uh, session, uh, that was carried out on our last PA day, April 23rd. Knowing that timetables will be going out to families, uh, in a, within the next month or, or so, in terms of timetables for, for staff, uh, we felt that we should communicate to those grade eight, uh, families affected. As for the larger communications, uh, that may have come from the board, you know, I can't speak to that. I can only speak to within, uh, the realm of my responsibilities of, uh, of IB and AP. Certainly there's been, uh, lengthy conversations within the senior men team. There has been a number of, uh, communications that have gone out to the minute, by the Ministry of Education to school boards. And if I, if I can quote Stephen Leche himself and his, one of his most recent pronouncements, he did say, "The government is currently consulting with teacher federations, education worker unions and trustee associations on the implementation of this critical initiative."
Sorry, and I don't mean to interrupt, uh, Superintendent Cordero, but I, I've heard your very lengthy response and, and, but I hear you once again saying that it was a ministry directive that to de-stream the pre-AP. I don't believe that's the case, but that's what you're just.
What I'm saying is, I, I don't believe I've said that. I've said is the ministry directive deed to de-stream math, grade nine math. The pre-AP program is taught, was taught within an academic curriculum. Since that academic curriculum has been de-streamed, then pre-AP has to be taught from within a de-streamed class.
Thank you, uh, trustee Guzzo. If you have further questions, you could go get back into the queue. Uh, Vice Chair Duarte?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, give me a second here. So, uh, question to, to Ms. Gorgi.
Hello again.
Sorry. Uh, what am I talking to? Sorry. I have a question here. Uh, just trying to get the, so in the last, uh, sorry, I'll pass, I'll pass.
Pass, okay.
I hope I didn't scare you off.
Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, question for, um, Superintendent Cordero. I'm, I heard during the delegation, some reference being made to other, to other boards who, I think in the, the statement was that the other boards have not, uh, canceled pre-AP. Is that the case? Uh, how, how are they handling the situation? I understand now that, that we are handling it within the de-streamed class. Uh, are the, other boards doing something different?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, trustee DeRosa for your question. Uh, a good number of school boards have, have decided to deliver the pre-AP math and pre-IB ma, uh, math programs within the de-streamed classes whereby you may have four, five in a particular pre-AP or pre, uh, de-streamed class. So let's say you have six classes of de-streamed at a school. And let's say there were 30 students in total accepted in the pre-AP math program. So you may have in one of the six classes, five students, in another class, 10, in another class, three, in another class, two. Many school boards have gone to that model, including ourselves. Other school boards, and not that many, have decided to cluster those students into one group. So they take the six de-streamed classes and they identify two classes where go, where they're going to populate all of those pre-AP students. But that is not within the spirit of the ministry's mandate. Because the ministry's mandate isn't just to de-stream the curriculum, but it's also to de-stream the population of students in those classrooms. So that apply level students, academic level students and, and other students who want gifted and whatnot, want that access to the pre-AP math can receive that access through differentiated instruction in each of those classes. So I, I hope I've tried to explain that to the best of my ability.
No, actually, I understand. I'd like a follow up, Mr. Chair, as possible.
Yes, so, yeah, please go ahead, trustee DeRosa.
So, um, what I heard was, uh, was two different approaches to, to this, to this dilemma that we have. Which, first of all, which boards have decided to cluster, for lack of a better word? And why have we not decided to do that?
I, I can't speak to, uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, uh, trustee DeRosa. I, I couldn't be able to, I wouldn't be able to identify what schools have clustered and how they've clustered or what criteria they've used. I, I can't speak to that. I, I can only speak to the conversations that have been had with respect to respecting the equity and inclusivity mandate that the ministry has placed upon school boards as the motivation behind de-streaming. We, we must keep in mind that math is the first grade nine subject that the ministry intends to de-stream and that de-streaming, the mandate is to continue across all compulsory courses in the coming years in grade nine, from English to science, uh, to, to, you know, social sciences and so forth. So that, that, that I can't, I can't speak to what a particular different school board has done. Different school boards have taken on different approaches, no differently than they've taken on different approaches with how they're delivering, you know, a quad master, a semester program, a quint master, um, meeting the needs of the individual families and the constituents of those school boards.
Uh, thank, thank you. So, uh, with, with keeping, uh, with respect to our other delegations, we've kind of taken a right turn. Um, normally we, we don't get as many questions to staff. So I'm asking that we, we move to our next delegation. Uh, most of the questions seem to be for staff and not for our delegate. Uh, so keeping in mind, being respectful for others who have to delegate, uh, I would like to thank, uh, Ms. Gorgi and, uh, we'll, we will, uh, deal with the delegation under Agenda item 8.1. Uh, up next, we have, uh, 5.5, which is de-streaming of grade nine math by Ms. Lim and Ms. Larenco. Uh, you have 10 minutes. Uh, please begin.
Pardon me, Mr. Chair. Could I pause you for a second, if I may? Our other delegate, um, is, uh, needing to switch orders with us because she has children to pick up.
Uh, no problem at all. We can do that. So, uh, Ms. Pierce, if you're, if you're ready, uh, please go ahead and thank you very much, Ms. Lim and Ms. Larenco.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, may I ask a question as well? I'm just looking at the time and, um, I'm just looking at the time and I'm just wondering, I don't know how long the next delegation is, but I would, would hate to see it interrupted by a motion to extend the meeting. So I just wanted to mention that. I'm sorry, I don't mean to overstep, but.
Nope, no problem at all. So, um, uh, we can, well, parliamentary capor, can we hold the motion to extend at this time, which is nine minutes away from the time when it's called, to be called? Parliamentary capor?
I apologize, Chair. I was having difficulties unmuting. Uh, you could do it now or, uh, as you have to have the event, the item, um, completed, you could wait till after the delegation. Your choice.
Uh, so we can, we could allow the delegate to proceed past 10 o'clock without interrupting them? Is what you're saying?
Um, probably safer to do it before, but I think, uh, you can, you can, if, if people are, don't object, you can do it. You could ask now and wait till after.
Okay, so do we have any objection of allowing the delegation to be completed? Uh, and then we'll vote to extend? Is there anybody opposed to that? Seeing that there is nobody opposed, thank you very much, trustees. Uh, so Ms. Pierce, uh, please proceed and then we'll do our vote afterwards.
Yes, thank you very much, uh, Chair and also, uh, Ms. Lim and Ms. Larenco for letting me jump ahead here. Um, it's hard sometimes to balance, uh, all the commitments in life, so I appreciate it. Um, so hello and good evening, uh, Chair Murphy, Director Daley, Board of Trustee Members, Educators and Fellow Parents. My name is Tara Pierce and I'm the proud mother of three daughters, two of whom are currently enrolled in high school and one of whom is about to begin her secondary school journey. I have asked for a moment of your time this evening to bring to your attention some concerns that myself and many other parents have regarding the de-streaming of the grade nine pre-AP math program and in particular, the elimination of the grade nine AP program. The concerns I have fall under three broad categories. First one is the quality and the integrity of the AP program. Second is the mental, emotional and intellectual health of the grade nine students. And thirdly, the, the logistics and continuity for families and schools. I'd like to take this opportunity to speak briefly to each of these concerns and explain why I urge you to reconsider the removal of the grade nine AP program. My first concern is making sure the quality integrity of the AP, pre-AP program remains intact. As you know, the AP program is a standardized program created by the College Board and it allows motivated students access to a higher level of learning, while at the same time, the ability to earn university credits. It is a progressive program that begins at grade nine and culminates in grade 12 with a set of standardized AP exams. As a mother of two girls who have been exposed to the different grade nine math programs, I can attest to the noticeable difference in both the types, uh, both the type of learning the girls were exposed to and the speed at which the learning took place. How can you remove an entire AP grade or essentially 25% of the overall AP program and still expect students to, uh, to gain the desired curriculum and learning tools in order to successfully complete the grade 12 AP courses and exams? The AP course moves at a breakneck pace, especially math. This does stimulate eager learners and teaches them critical skills such as time management, prioritizing. It seems an impossible expectation that you can remove a quarter of the AP math program and then somehow make it up over the next three years. This will negatively impact the overall quality and integrity of the AP math program. In addition, the ministry's goal for de-streamings, um, are much larger than grade nine math. There has been talk of de-streaming other subjects as well as grade 10. There are advocates who would like to see all subjects de-streamed for at least grade nine and 10, and it's difficult to know where this will end. If the province de-streams grade nine, grade 10 math next September, will the board eliminate that next? What about other subjects? Does this mean the Halt and Catholic Board will eventually eliminate the entire pre-AP program? Because you can't include the AP program in the streaming for grade nine and 10 for all subjects and still expect to have an AP program. It's impossible. This, of course, would make no sense. The board really needs to examine the future goals for the AP program before deciding to eliminate it in grade nine. My second concern centers around the mental, emotional and intellectual health of the grade nine students. This is one of the largest concerns. This is one of the largest concerns that are voiced by parents. They are worried that instead of creating the intended equity for students, D-streaming pre AP grade-nine math will actually create an even bigger inequity. It will ultimately prevent students from reaching their full potential by creating a stressful, emotionally toxic, and unstimulating learning environment. The D-streamed grade-nine math class will be a collection of kids who really struggle with math and those who are extremely gifted at math. Math is one of those subjects where you either get it or you don't. The teachers will, of course, have no choice but to teach to the lowest level in order to make sure that no student gets left behind. This will leave the stronger students unstimulated and bored, but worse, the weak students will be in a classroom where they witness students completing the work quickly and without trouble while they are struggling to understand basic concepts. It will make them feel dumb or stupid. It will make them insecure and afraid to ask questions for fear of being judged. It will increase their math anxiety. To have such a large and very visible gap between strong students, who would normally be in the AP stream, and weaker students, who would normally be in the applied stream, is extremely detrimental, especially to those students at the extremes of the spectrum. Keeping the grade-nine pre AP math program and D-streaming only the applied and the academic can help to minimize this effect. You can still reach the objective of creating inclusivity and accessibility, especially to racialized communities and low-income households, while still providing students who want to be challenged an outlet to do so. It is important to note that the provincial efforts to D-stream grade-nine courses, starting with the math, does not and never has specifically included the AP program. This was a board-level decision, which is why I'm here before you today, not standing but sitting. Lastly, the removal of the grade-nine AP program creates a logistical challenge for families and affects the continuity of student learning. So what do I mean by this? The AP program is only offered at a handful of schools, and admittance to the program is done through an application process. Starting AP math in grade-10 will significantly reduce the enrollment into the program, namely because of the barrier for students to have to switch schools in order to enroll. This would be a large deterrent and would not strongly attract students from outside current AP schools. The math AP course is the most popular, therefore, by not having a continuous program that spans the length of a student's entire high school career, will decrease the participation in this amazing program. Ultimately, the AP program is not a stream, but an optional specialized program that students who wish to be challenged beyond the regular educational curriculum can participate in. It gives high-achieving students an option for a deeper learning experience, to challenge them through an expansion of thinking and analysis. To participate in the AP program, students must enroll in a minimum of two AP courses, with math being the most popular due to the high interest in STEM programs at post-secondary schools. This means that most families will choose science and math as complementary AP courses to meet the criteria. Without the math option, families must now choose a non-STEM AP course, which may not be of interest to the student. Based on this, it's clear that there are several logistical challenges that are created when including grade-nine math in the D-streaming process. The good news is there is a reasonable solution to these concerns. It simply involves a compromise. Based on the letter sent out by the Halton Catholic District School Board, the motivation behind D-streaming grade-nine math program is centered around inclusivity and allowing students more time to acclimate to secondary education before being locked into a particular post-secondary path. I really truly understand and respect the board's position surrounding this matter, and I applaud you for recognizing the action needs to happen. I believe you can still meet your objectives by D-streaming applied and academic grade-nine math while leaving the AP program intact. Even more so, I think this will enhance your objectives based on my arguments above. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pierce, for your delegation. We'll just have a matter of business to extend the vote, and then we can focus on questions. So trustees, we're going to vote to extend. Trustee Tomasi, how do you vote?
Mr. Chair, I thought we already did that. We agreed that we were going to extend before the current delegation began.
We agreed to vote after the delegation. How do you vote? In favor? Sorry, you cut out trustee Tomasi. I'll mark you as in favor. If I'm wrong, please let me know. Trustee Carravella? Thank you. Trustee?
In favor.
In favor. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trinata?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Rashdi?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Vice Chair Doherty? Trustee Guzal?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy's in favor. We're extended. Thank you for your votes. So we're going to focus just on questions for Ms. Pierce relating to her delegation, and we have another delegation. If you need to ask questions of staff, we can do that. Vice Chair Doherty?
Hey, Mr. Chair. Let me just get my camera first. Okay, so Ms. Pierce, in your presentation here, in the first page and third paragraph, you talked about the AP program as being a standardized program by the College Board. I am familiar with this myself, but do you see the standardized program becoming non-standard in a D-streamed class?
So I do. So while reading, while reading here on my resources, the AP curriculum is created by the College Board by a panel of experts and college-level educators. The school has to apply for the designation of AP and AP courses to be able to call it that, and these courses are audited by the College Board to ascertain that they all satisfy the AP curriculum. So I don't really fully understand how removing part of the program will allow us to maintain the AP status. So I do believe that D-streaming will affect the AP curriculum.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Doherty, do you have a follow-up? Trustee Kelly, you have the floor?
Thank you, and through you, Chair. Thank you so much for this detailed information in regards to this very important topic. Considering that the theme of equity, especially amongst lower-income families and racialized communities, was a big theme near the end of the delegation, I was just looking for a clarifying question from the board staff in regards to why HCSB decided to D-stream the grade-nine pre AP courses specifically through an equity lens.
Through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, trustee Kelly. Ultimately, you know, these are conversations had among senior administrators and with the Director of Education. I will speak to a couple of data points. One, AP programming, which is monitored and done in consultation with the AP College Board, exists in all provinces in Canada. We are, we, and when I say "we," Ontario, is the only province in Canada that continues to stream grade-nine classes. So every other province in the country delivers a grade-nine D-stream program with pre AP math, pre AP English, pre AP science, curriculum extensions within their programs. And other provinces are doing quite well with their pre AP preparations in grade-nine despite not having streamed programs like the Province of Ontario. A second point, the publication out of the Toronto District School Board in 2019 states, "Recent evidence from the Toronto District School Board indicates that their D-streaming efforts are producing positive results, with enrollment in applied courses falling by fifty percent over the last four years, and Black, Latin American, and Middle Eastern students moving to academic programs at the fastest rates." So the data that we have received about D-streaming suggests that it is elevating students who would normally be marginalized and not have those access to those opportunities like pre AP programs, will now have those opportunities and further support the other students who wouldn't otherwise have those privileges coming out of grade eight, and enhance the program altogether, because there are more people, more students, moving from what would traditionally be an applied-level class to an academic class, or from academic classes to academic classes in grade-10, 11, and 12 that provide pre AP grade-10 and 11 math. So the data, both out of the Toronto District School Board and the data that is shared across the country, indicates that students are thriving in pre AP math programs in a D-streamed environment. And I can only share the data that has been shared with us.
Thank you, Superintendent Cordero. Trustee Kelly, do you have a follow-up question?
No, thank you so much for that answer.
Thank you. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I actually just have a clarifying question on Superintendent Cordero, if I'm allowed. It pertains to the delegation, but it's just something that Anthony just mentioned, and I just wanted to get some clarification around it.
Okay, we want to be cognizant of the delegate's time, so if it's a quick answer, as in quick, that would be great.
I think it will apply to all the delegations so far, if I just put it in the context that I'm going to put this in. So my question, Superintendent Cordero, is, if I'm going to take this a different, just a different direction for a minute. So I've heard this evening about, you know, as far as what the ministry's mandate is behind these decisions, and equity and inclusion, and the importance of differentiated learning, and how we can, think we can offer that through a D-streamed program that allows for individual students to be challenged where they are and be taught where they are. So if that's the, if that's the thought process, then why aren't we looking at including locally-developed students in that program? Why are they in a separate math program? Why are we not rolling them up into the D-streaming application and allowing them to be a part of this? Again, if we're looking at equity and inclusion, my assumption would be that we are, they need a specific, they need specific interventions and specific accommodations to meet them where they are. So if that's the case, I'm looking at the other side of the spectrum with students who are requiring that, perhaps from a more challenging AP perspective. So if we're going to D-stream, let's D-stream for all, let's put everybody in the same class, and let's meet them where they are with their differentiated learning. So that's where I'm struggling a little bit.
Yeah, well, I can understand that concern, and I can understand that struggle, trustee Agnew, and through you, Mr. Chair. The decision not to include locally-developed programming in a D-streamed environment is a ministry decision. They decided to D-stream academic and applied-level math into one program. I would have to defer to Superintendent Ballow as to the opportunities for students who have been identified within the locally-developed stream as to their opportunities to participate in a D-streamed program. I don't know what the constraints or the limitations may or may not be. I can say that there has been discussion about clustering some gifted students and providing them the opportunity to continue on as a group, and I do have some data, if ever asked, about gifted programs as well, but I can't speak to the locally-developed program with any authority. So maybe I defer to Superintendent Ballow.
Superintendent Kroll has his hand up. Maybe he wanted to speak to that? Superintendent Kroll?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, and I can certainly try, trustee Agnew. In the sessions that we've been at with the ministry, they've made it pretty clear that locally-developed is to be approached differently. As someone that's taught locally-developed, I taught locally-developed science for a number of years, my experience has been that those courses, students that choose those courses, it's a conversation with both the elementary school and the high school. Those courses are typically very small, so my experience would be, you know, you have classes of five or six, and those are students that are typically entering, entering high school well below grade level. So it allows the teacher to certainly address those individual needs and certainly try to get students back to approaching grade-level performance, if that answers your question.
It does. It does answer my question. I'm just, like I said, looking at the different end of the spectrums. I'm looking at the kids that are requiring a locally-developed math or English or science program, and why they require that, and I'm looking on the other side of the spectrum where we're hearing from gifted parents or, you know, children who are requiring that more challenging aspect of that pre AP math, and just, you know, wondering why, you know, we're, again, taking the ministry conversation and why we're continuing to provide LD opportunities for those subjects, but perhaps looking at changing the way we're offering it on the other end. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, trustee Guzal. Are there any other questions for Ms. Pierce? We have Vice Chair Doherty?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Question to Ms. Pierce. In the second-last paragraph of your first page, you talk about D-streaming plans for grade-nine and ten. You said from reliable sources that you get it, or are they planning to go up to grade-11 in all subjects?
Yes. Well, I'd like to think that the CBC News, as well as, and news presses that were put out by the Governor of Ontario are considered reliable sources.
Follow-up?
Rose. Oh, sorry.
Am I frozen?
You just froze for a moment. You're unfrozen now.
I'm unfrozen now. Okay. Well, hopefully, my sources are sort of Canadian news outlets that are summarizing press releases put out by the Ontario government, so I would definitely deem those as reliable sources, and that they say that they are suggesting streaming be pushed back to grades 10 and possibly grade 11 for not only math, but multiple subjects. So there is definitely the conversation that's out there amongst educators and politicians that the D-streaming will be more extensive than just one single grade-nine math class, and I don't see how you can continue to eliminate a pre AP program. You know, you lose twenty-five percent of that detailed, in-depth learning. Now, I definitely hear what's being said about giving extracurricular challenges and enhanced learning on the side with after-school programs, but I'd be hard-pressed to believe that that's going to be as intensive as having a completely taught AP program. So you're eliminating grade-nine, and then they D-stream grade-10, so it's just, it's a cascading effect that's going to just continue to move up until it ends up with the AP program no longer being a viable option, because how are students supposed to complete the grade-12 AP course and write the AP exams when they've lost years of the AP program?
Vice Chair Doherty, you have a follow-up?
Yes, Mr. Chair. And, Ms. Pierce, are you aware of any pilot program? We started somewhere this fall for D-streaming subjects like English and geography?
No, I'm sorry. I'm not aware of any pilot programs that are currently running.
There is a pilot program going on right now.
So which I guess just indicates that they are looking at D-streaming more than just a grade-nine math program. So it is going to, that suggests to me that it's just going to continue to cascade up, which, again, I'd like to repeat that I am in support of the D-streaming of the applied and academic. I understand the purpose behind that, and I think it's admirable that we are making these corrections. However, I just don't believe that the AP program is beneficial to be included in this D-streaming process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that there are no other trustees to ask questions, I would like to thank you, Ms. Pierce, for your delegation, and we will be dealing with a response to it under Agenda Item 8.1.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have 5.5, D-streaming of Grade Nine Math, Ms. Lim and Ms. Larenko. Thank you for ceding your spot. We appreciate it, and please begin when you're ready.
Not a problem. And before you start the timer, if I could just confirm that Rosie will move the slides along for us as we go.
Yes, she'll do that for you.
Thank you. We're going to need every minute, every second of our 10 minutes. Good evening, Chair Murphy, Director Daly, trustees and senior staff. In the interest of time, we will skip the introductory part of our delegation, a lot of which has also been covered by previous delegates. Jessica and I are also here to share concerns about the board's decision to eliminate pre-AP and pre-IB grade nine math. The next slide outlines the message that parents of incoming grade nine AP students received on April 30th are part of that message. There are two key concerns with this message. The elimination of these courses was not initiated by the Ministry of Education, and it is not applicable to all grade nine students in Ontario. De-streaming has long been contemplated in Ontario and already piloted in other boards. It did not come as a surprise. The goal has always been to address inequities of marginalized groups and increase access of those students to all post-secondary pathways, including university. It has always been about eliminating the applied stream by combining applied and academic so that students aren't precluded from a university pathway. Offering AP and IB in addition to de-streamed math does not interfere with this goal, but eliminating these courses takes opportunities away from students. The ministry's announcement back in July 2020 was specific to applied and academic courses. This was never about optional programming. The ministry also expects boards to engage stakeholders to identify barriers and build shared understandings of the need for de-streaming, among other things. The ministry specifically lists parents, teachers, and SEAC amongst stakeholders to be engaged. I'm co-chair of my Catholic School Council, Vice Chair of SEAC, and member-at-large on CPIC. I have periodically asked about de-streaming since it was announced and even before. Nobody ever had any information and only ever indicated that the curriculum had not yet been released. There's been no consultation with stakeholders. We weren't even told what was happening.
In the email communication to grade eight parents, AP schools announcing the cancellation of pre-AP grade nine math informed parents of their plans for increased educator capacity, curriculum extensions, diversified instruction, and potential after-school programs. In my role, both as a regular classroom teacher and as a special education classroom teacher, I have firsthand experience of differentiating to meet a wide range of abilities. I have spent several years on the math capacity team and served as lead math teacher to bring best practices into schools. Currently as a special education teacher, I co-plan effective math strategies to support low-floor and high-stilling environments for diverse learners and support transition to high school. I recently took an intermediate math qualification to further update myself with best practice and pedagogy along with the release of the new math curriculum. The next slide lists high-impact practices from the Ministry of Education. Gone are the days of teaching pre-planned sequential lessons based on single-grade-level textbook, followed by cookie-cutter evaluations based on knowledge and memory. Numeracy skills go beyond memorizing algorithms and formulae. To have flipped classrooms driven by student data and conversations, the teacher becomes more of a facilitator. But for this best practice, the teacher has to administer diagnostic assessments, locate appropriate target intervention strategies to support growth on the continuum of numeracy development, design low-floor yet open-ended problem-based lessons, organize ongoing check-ins and formative assessments to inform next steps, promote think-aloud and problematic cognitive questions, and co-create learning goals and success criteria while giving feedback to each student. In an elementary classroom, a typical range of student readiness and math content levels taught spans three to five grades. Although a given teacher is assigned to a particular grade, there could be IEP students working on a modified math program a few grade levels below, grade-level students who lack foundation, and some who have an aptitude for math above grade level. I can tell you, no matter the ambition, the passion, or competency of the teacher, the reality of the halting Catholics, de-streamed AP/IB academic-applied all-in-one class will be chasing two rabbits and catching none. A teacher will try to address as wide a range of students as possible but have to take turns focusing time and energy on different small groups. Most of the time, the focus goes to the struggling students to promote growth and their well-being. So what happens to the math conversations and problem-solving tasks experiences? While the teacher promotes community building and conversations, it isn't always mirrored by the students at either end of the numeracy continuum. Typically, the high-achieving students get assigned extra work, become peer tutors or bored, and eventually disengaged. And those with low math esteem get discouraged, and inevitably, the mindset of us versus them becomes apparent despite the teacher's intention to build a mathematical community. Elimination of pre-AP/IB math in combination with de-streaming applied and academic will only stretch this range of continuum of learners further and negatively impact the zone of proximity of best practice. The next slide shows the seven research-based foundational principles from the ministry's paying attention to mathematics education. These principles support implementing differentiated, responsive, and effective lessons for all profile of learners, as collaboration is key. However, a collaborative math conversation is highly impacted by the student's ability to think and reason proportionally. How engaging and challenging will math conversation be for all learners if the mental math abilities within the classrooms are so diverse? How can the class then co-create success criteria and learning goals as a community when you have students gathered all over the landscape of mathematical learning? Based on the de-stream curriculum, based on the AP curriculum? No matter what the intention or the willingness of the teacher or students, both the class time and teacher's time have to be divided among the differing abilities. If so, why waste the high-achieving student's time during class only to create separate extension or after-school extra work? The de-streaming of period AP/IB serves no additional benefits to the AP/IB students nor the de-streamed applied academic students. It's not rocket science. Think of a hockey training camp, placing house league, select, and rep players with one coach to meet them where they are and do practice and scrimmages together. Is this what you want your hockey player to have, including your triple-A rep player? And to be told that the coach will differentiate, get special training, use small groups, just one coach doing it all, extensions and add extra practice at another time? Would this be the most equitable approach to push each player's growth?
Ms. Lorenko, you may be muted.
I was kicked out and I just got back in, sorry.
Okay, no problem at all.
I've been kicked out a few times. I call it Murphy's Law.
No offense taken.
In sharing the rationale behind eliminating grade nine pre-AP and IB math, staff shared their vision that the de-streamed class would allow them to prepare more students to enter AP or IB in grade 10 as well as write the AP exam. We've shared our different perspectives as to why we don't think this is a reasonable expectation and that any possible gains will be offset by jeopardized learning for a group of students. In addition, the AP exam is not the goal for most students. Either way, the two options are not mutually exclusive. But there's another problem. AP and IB are offered at limited schools. How likely are students to switch schools to access one AP or IB course after grade nine? In the 2018 Gifted Students Survey, students made it very clear that once established in a particular school, they are reluctant to leave, even for better programming. But even if they're willing and otherwise able, geographic barriers may persist. The ministry has not mandated that boards de-stream pre-AP or pre-IB math. In fact, it has actually acknowledged that boards have the autonomy to offer these programs, but they have asked boards to review other barriers to accessing these programs, including location. While the board is attempting to de-stream AP and IB, with the absence of a mandate to do so, it has not done what the ministry has asked. Geographic and other barriers persist in these programs. The issue of geographic barriers has previously been brought before this board, and it was briefly, if only partially, addressed by the previous board, only to have those barriers re-erected in the name of equity. Technically, it is equitable to take something away from everybody so that nobody has access. That's what this board is planning to do with grade nine pre-AP and IB math. Is this really the direction that this board wants to move in? That is not what the ministry means when they talk about equity, as described in the 2017 Equity Action Plan and quoted on the next slide. In last week's policy meeting, Director Daly stated that we could have a pre-AP math if we believe that it was in the spirit and direction of the ministry regarding de-streaming. The board can, in fact, offer pre-AP and IB math, as other boards are doing, because these courses are not at all part of the de-streaming mandate. To improve equity in the board and protect these programs from possible future de-streaming mandates, the board needs to review all barriers, not slowly eliminate the courses offered. With that in mind, a request of trustees is on the final slide. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Lim and Lorenko. We are opening up the floor to trustees for questions. Vice Chair Doherty?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Question to Ms. Lim. Ms. Lim, you mentioned that you're a professional teacher and you have us specialized in math. So, and you explained very well that we have kids of different levels in the same class. You also forgot to mention about kids with SPAC ed who would be in the class, another level added, as well as kids with IEP in the same class. So now we're talking about different combinations and levels of instruction for different levels. Could you comment on how you, as a teacher, put yourself in that situation, how you would deal with evaluating our students, and how you would write a report card for all these different combinations that we have? I mean, you could skip the question.
Okay, well, through you, Chair. Our goal always as an educator is to meet the students where they are and to push them forward. So if we have an IEP student, we plan according to that. Now, the key difference here is in the elementary grades, when students have an IEP and a modified curriculum, even if Johnny, let's say, is in a grade eight class learning grade five math curriculum, he will be taught at grade five and he'll be evaluated at grade five. Now, in a de-streamed class in grade nine, I believe they're all learning the same curriculum. The final evaluation will have to be based on the same curriculum as everyone else. I hope I understood the question. Trustee Duarte?
Yes. Also, not only with kids with IEPs, but our kids are different levels. There are different levels of the kids in the pre-AP as well as the de-streamed class, and each one is learning at a different level. You also have SPAC ed kids in the class, so how you, as a teacher, would evaluate them and give them a report cards and be prepared?
Okay, so in order for learning to be meaningful, we have to go through a diagnostic to analyze where the student is on the continuum of learning. So if we have student A who's around grade six level and student B and a few others around grade eight level and some, and then, you literally have to come up with a lesson where it addresses all the varied levels. There is no simple manual, you follow lesson by lesson, or you follow, if the student is struggling with this, then you do this. A teacher would have to pull from various resources to target their interventions.
Thank you for your questions, Vice Chair Doherty. I'll just have to interrupt. We'll have to vote to extend. It's almost 10:30. Trustee Carabella, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Chirnata?
In favor.
Trustee Guber? Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Roshdi? We'll come back for Trustee Roshdi. Trustee Agnew?
Favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Vice Chair Doherty?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo? Trustee Demasi?
Favor.
And Trustee Murphy's in favor. Thank you. So we're extended to 11 o'clock. Trustee, oh, sorry, Trustee Demasi, I think I missed you. Your hand was up previously. Did you have a question for Ms. Lim or Ms. Lorenko? Trustee Demasi, did I miss you?
You did not. I've already replied, yes, I'm in favor of extending.
No, I was asking, I saw that your hand was up in the meeting chat, and I had gone to Vice Chair Doherty, so I was asking if I missed you, if you wanted to ask a question of Ms. Lim and Ms. Lorenko.
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the delegates. Ms. Lim, I just, there was some reference made to geographical barriers. Now, my understanding is that the AP program is in every district and in every region. Can you elaborate on what barriers could exist?
Yes, so we do have several schools that do offer AP within the board. However, geographically, they're out of bounds for many students, and they have to rely on their own transportation, and sometimes city transit takes several buses or two to three hours, one-way commute, so that definitely is a geographical barrier. I also think in turn that turns into a socio-economic barrier because some parents are able to drive kids and some are not.
Thank you.
Trustee DeRosa, do you have a follow-up?
No, I'm fine, Mr. Chair. I'll get back in the queue.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella?
Okay, thank you. So in your delegation, this is to Mrs. Lorenko, she mentioned sharing her different perspectives, but I only remember hearing Ms. Lim's perspective as a teacher. Can you clarify what you mean by different perspectives?
Sure, sorry, that was in the delegation that we submitted, but we had to, we had to cut it out because we were over the time. So just in terms of, you know, we're hearing that these students that need enrichment, that there's going to be these resources, they're going to be provided with enrichment, extension activities, differentiation, all of that stuff. So I had a child that was on an IEP for several years, which, who was supposed to receive enrichment, and it was a significant challenge despite ongoing advocacy, and that's one student. And I think the best example that I could give that really aligns with what we're talking about here today. In grade 12, he was registered in academic data management. The school now offers AP statistics, but they didn't at the time. So he had academic data management, and his extension, his enrichment was that his teacher was going to provide him with those extension materials to write the AP statistics exam. And he, you know, the teacher was great. I know she was committed. My son had the desire to do it. He was fully supported at home. Everybody was on board, but somehow it never happened. It just never happened, and I don't even remember all the reasons for it now. But, you know, having an academic course with extensions is not the same as having a pre-AP course. If we have the curriculum and we can deliver the curriculum directly, that's what we should do. I just, you know, it all sounds great on paper, but I have difficulty seeing it work in practice.
Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up?
I do. The follow-up is different, related to the AP exam. Can you clarify for me the AP exam, and is it a goal for students, or how do you see that?
Yeah, thank you. That's a really great question because I know there was comments made about that earlier, and we've heard comments about that from staff as well. I would say that the writing of the AP exam is not a goal for most students. Most students are there for the enriched learning environment, for the accelerated learning opportunities, and we heard that from most of our delegates tonight as well. The, and by taking away the pre-AP grade nine course, and I know we've heard that it's not being eliminated, I respectfully disagree with that characterization. By taking away one year, that's one year out of four where they have that advanced learning, and it's a possibility that they will be disengaged and not pick it up in grade 10. You know, as far as the exams go, there's a number of reasons why students don't write them. One of them is there's a fee. You have to get a certain score on the exam in order for it to be of any use in university, so there's a risk that you don't get that score. They're tough exams. My son didn't write one because it was on the day of prom. These exams are in May, these kids are in grade 12, you know, their grade 12 year, they're winding down. Maybe they don't want to be studying for a hard exam. Not every university grants the credits. Even within a university, it can vary by program. And something I learned the other day, and as well, so if it's a core course to your program, right, and even the guidance counselors and the teachers would advise the students of this, if the course is If the course is core to your program, you should take it in first year, even if you have the opportunity to get exempted. So that you're getting accustomed to the university experience. There may be material that's not covered in the grade 12 AP course that's covered at university. Every university is different. And something I just learned the other day that I wasn't aware of, at least in Canadian universities, I don't know if it's the same in the US, quite often, even if you have the prerequisite, you can't take a course until you're in that year. So even though a student might get the first year math credit, they can't take second year math until they are in second year. So now, if they're going to take that credit, you know, they're a whole year without math. And that's risky, right? So that, this is, you know, Superintendent Cordero talked about how few of them write the exam by the time they get to grade 12. And I believe those numbers, but I don't think those numbers are going to change. For all those reasons that I've just shared, that's just not, you know, and I don't hear any parents or students saying that they're in those classes because of university credit. They're in there for the learning and for the environment. And that's what I hear from my kids, from their friends. Both of my kids, one is still in the program. That is overwhelmingly the reason why students are in those classes, not because of the exams. So I hope that answers your question. I feel very passionate about this, obviously.
Thank you. Up next, we have Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, to Ms. Lorenko. Ms. Lorenko, you stated your position, but we did recently hear from Superintendent Cordero and he made it very clear that the de-streaming of AP math speaks to the spirit of the ministry directive. And he made it very clear that's true. Does that not change your position at all?
Not at all. And in fact, to be very frank, I respectfully say that a lot of what I heard tonight is very concerning to me. I have been following this topic. It's been a topic of interest for me. As some of you know, I'm an advocate for gifted students in our board, but I also do advocacy at the provincial level. And this is a concerning movement because a lot of boards like ours don't offer gifted programming in high school. And so the only choice is academic. We're fortunate to at least have AP as an option for some of our students. Again, as I stated, the ministry's objective has always been to make sure that every student is not precluded from a university pathway. And in looking, I went back and I found the memo from when the ministry announced this last July. And they actually talked about locally developed and applied courses as being both of concern. So it's interesting to hear, you know, maybe they've changed their position on that, but it's interesting to hear that they're no longer looking at locally developed. Everything that's been written about this is about applying, apply and academic. And through my role at the provincial level, I was invited to one of the ministry's roundtable discussions on this topic. And the materials that they provided to us, I know that the board has the same materials. And right in those materials, they are very clear, one of their objectives is to eliminate applied and academic, to combine those two. And in that same document, they go on to say very clearly that the boards have the autonomy to continue to offer what they refer to as optional programming, of which they list advanced placement, international, black laureate, STEM programs, art schools, other things that our board maybe doesn't offer. But they're very clear that those are, the boards have autonomy to offer those. And they don't include them in their de-streaming initiatives ever. And I will just, I just want to touch on one other thing because I want it to be clear. Oh, and also, what I'm hearing described as we're going to have this group of students in the class and they're the pre-AP students and they're going to get the material. I would say the ministry would frown on that. They would see that as de-streaming. Or sorry, restreaming. And when we talk about gifted students being clustered, please remember that gifted students have an IEP. So if they're being clustered as part of their special education program and their IEP, that is different. The ministry, that is outside of streaming efforts. But if we're clustering students together to work on a separate curriculum from the rest of the class, that's not in the ministry's mandate. As well as getting rid of AP, I stand very firmly that that is not part of the ministry's mandate. And actually, Jessica.
I'm here, Maria. Hi, hello, through you, Mr. Chair. I would also like to add on that I actually had a phone conversation with the education officer, Caroline Albanez. She did confirm that the de-streaming direction was strictly for academic and applied. And specialty courses such as French immersion, APIB are up to individual board jurisdiction outside of de-streaming. It remains a board-level decision, not the de-streaming mandate.
Trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow-up question?
No, thank you. You both answered my question very clearly.
Thank you. So in the queue, we have Trustee Intomasi, Trustee DeRosa, and then Vice Chair Duer. Trustee Intomasi, you have the floor?
Mr. Chair, my question was just answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. I have a very quick question. Do we, Ms. Lim, do we have any idea what, how many kids we may lose as a result of this initiative?
I do not have the board's ansis number for the current year, but gifted students alone in the past have, about 20% have left the board to access enrichment kind of a program. But even high achieving students, I would say that they would also be at risk wondering where else they can get the challenged curriculum that they would like to receive. And I believe currently our board does attract students from our co-terminist board based on this program and even private schools. So I could potentially see this making negative impact on our number of enrollments.
Thank you, Ms. Lim.
Trustee DeRosa, do you have a follow-up question?
I'm good, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Duer?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Question to either one of our presenters. I spent a day trying to understand what this de-streaming was and you presented it quite well, de-streaming math. Did any of you ever hear the term de-stream population? I just heard it today and I'm confused.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
I just, I mean, I've paid attention to your presentation. I've done my research. You talked about de-stream curriculum for math. I just heard the term today, de-stream population. Have you ever come across that term in your research?
De-stream population? No, I haven't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Trustees, do we have any other questions? I don't see anybody else in the queue. I'd like to thank our delegates, Ms. Lim and Ms. Lorenko. We will deal with the.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I believe Superintendent Cordero was not able to answer questions earlier about which boards are offering the program. Am I able to answer that question?
Yes, please do.
Okay, so I have confirmation from Toronto Catholic Board, they are offering. Toronto District Board, they're offering. And it's funny, they're the ones who shared that de-stream data, but that the one that Superintendent Cordero referred to was strictly for applied and academic comparisons. In fact, TDSB has decided to lift the biggest barrier by eliminating the admission application process. It's an open door and students can attend if they would like to challenge themselves. Dufferin Peel continues to offer them. Peel District is continuing to offer them. And they clearly said in their communication to me that they will offer the program because it's a combination of Ontario math curriculum plus the AP curriculum. And the streaming does not impact AP stream. And your Catholic also confirmed that they will continue to follow this previous course of studies to be offered to the students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There'll be a response to your delegation under 8.1. I thank all our delegates and thank our trustees for all the fulsome questions that were asked. So as per our amended agenda, we're moving on to item 10.1, which is student trustee update. Student trustees, please proceed.
Right, starting off, we have believing the student senate continues to aspire to be models of Christ by making sure that all students feel safe, welcome and loved. The Wellbeing Committee began its social media initiative for the mental health month of May to promote mental wellbeing through connection. Additionally, a student trustee representative has continued to work with the student-led Equity Group at our board to ensure that Student Voice is taking action during Asian Heritage Month by helping to promote resources and spread awareness about the topic.
Thank you, trustee Kelly. The Student Senate concluded the Wear Your Cause on Your Sleeve campaign. This event was designed to spread awareness on a variety of different topics around the world. Individual schools and senates were encouraged to talk about and educate students on issues such as animal cruelty, access to clean water, racial and religious discrimination, world hunger and mental health. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees, do we have any questions for our student trustees? I don't see any. So thank you very much, student trustees. I'm glad we were able to enjoy your report. Up next, we have item 10.3, School Update. Director Daly, you have the floor?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. I haven't done one of these in a while, so I might be a little bit rusty. But we, away we go. So a couple of things, I'll highlight a few things that we're considering for closing off our school year and into the summer. And then some of our thoughts around planning for 21, 22. So as trustees would be aware, on May 13th, the stay-at-home order was extended until at least June 2nd, 2021. So all of our schools have been in a remote learning environment and will continue until schools are back in session face-to-face. During this time period, childcare centers have remained open, but before and after-school programs have been closed. We have had a number of students studying in person. Students who are not able to access the curriculum adequately through remote learning have been attending schools in person since the latest remote learning period began. This is a bit of a more recent update. We do know that children aged 12 to 17 will be eligible to start to book in the youth vaccination program at the end of this month, May 31st. We're working with Holton Public Health on our own youth vaccination program for our region. We did send out, I think, two letters from Holton Public Health towards the end of last week. And they really just kind of let us know about the dates and that further information would be coming and when the booking system will become available. And like any of the vaccination programs, whether they're school-related or not, they are dependent on vaccine supply. In terms of what I want to take you through tonight, I want to give a quick update on the Ontario Secondary School Literacy Test because it has implications for our students right now. And then in the coming year, we're going to talk a little bit about our summer learning program just to remind trustees of some of the offerings and then some of the conversations we've entered into with regards to planning for next year. So for the OSSLT, because of the extension of the stay-at-home order until June 2nd, that really eliminates the ability for our students, if they were going to attempt the field test this year, because the field test can only be done in an in-person environment. So students won't write the field test this year. Students who are graduating this year, the literacy requirement has already been waived. The literacy requirement for graduates next year will also be waived, but I'll come back to that. In order to kind of make up that opportunity missed from this year, EQAO will administer two sittings of the OSSLT next year. One in the fall and then the traditional additional one in the spring. With regards to our summer programming, we're offering what's kind of our traditional core summer school programming. Secondary credit-bearing courses offered online. So that'll include full credit, will include credit recovery courses, reach-ahead opportunities, students going from grade eight into grade nine. If students want to try a grade nine course, as well as the 55-hour upgrading credit courses. So credit recovery, reach-ahead and upgrading, we introduced those three kind of newer programs last summer and will continue with them this year. We'll also be offering two specific programs, summer learning programs for special education students with special education needs. The first one is a two-week synchronous instruction program in mid-July with a focus on literacy, numeracy, social skills and adaptive functioning skills. The second one will be towards the end of the summer, a one-week transition program to get our kids ready to come back, hopefully, in person in September. Both of the programs, both of the specialized summer programs and our secondary school credit-bearing programs will be supported by a variety of special education staff as they were last year. And that's a great thing because it does offer more opportunities for all of our students. And we're thankful that that funding has continued this year. And hopefully that will become something that just becomes a regular part of the summer learning funding. There's also some additional funding to support student mental health needs and families over the summer as well, which we had some experience with last year. In terms of looking to the fall. So we have had further direction from the government about what September 2021 will look like. That memo came out with the, all of the GSN and budget funding announcements that we got. I guess it's a week and a half ago now. So boards will be required to offer a remote learning option, both in elementary and secondary. For our elementary, our in-person elementary schools, we'll plan to operate them much like we did this year to start the year. So students will continue to be co-horted within their own class and their homeroom teacher. Specialized teachers like FSL, the ARX-2Z, they'll come to the classroom to make sure that students are getting that full breadth of programming. But we will start the year, at least the plan is now, where teachers will come to the class as opposed to moving students around. We'll still try and limit that. Students can be or will be able to get pulled into smaller groups for some intervention programs if needed. But that will also be based on kind of what the current COVID situation is in September and working with our local public health. We will have a standalone elementary virtual school next year as we did this year. So that will remain an option. We do believe that for the vast majority of our students, in-person, everyday, face-to-face learning is what we'd like to see our students do. But we do realize that for some parents and for some students, the virtual school was a good option for them for last year. So we'll offer that option again. We'll be sending out survey registration information for the elementary virtual school from, I think the window is from June 1st to June 12th. It's important, and this will come out in the communication, important for parents to realize that there won't be the multiple opportunities to move from virtual to face-to-face and back. It's just, it's too disruptive to the in-person learning environment. So we'll be asking, really asking parents to make a commitment at least until February, till kind of report card time. And then we'll have some flexibility in terms of students being able to change that learning environment then. In terms of our secondary program, it is a little bit of kind of the same approach we had last year. We've been asked to plan for a couple of different scenarios. Right now, the direction from the ministry to all boards is that school boards will, or students will attend face-to-face instruction every day for 300 minutes of instruction, but they'll be limited to two classes per day. So essentially that means at least for the first semester, we'd be back into a quad semester sort of schedule where students would study, they'd take their period one and period two classes for the first 45 or 46 days and then would move to their SEM 1, traditional SEM 1, period three and period four classes for the second part of what would traditionally be first semester. The hope is that by second semester, we'll be able to move. we'll be able to move back to our traditional semested format, where students would study three or four classes. We'd be on kind of a regular, everyday routine. But that'll be determined largely by what, where we're at with the pandemic, and obviously, also with, you know, the hopes that both students and adults will be, if not vaccinated, twice by that point, certainly close to it. We're also being asked to have plans to change that mode of delivery if we need to, and we obviously did this year. So, one would be to have an adapted timetable, much like what we were in this year, where instruction would be split between some in-person and some remote. So, that was the adapted timetable we followed all year. And then, finally, in the event that we had to go full-remote instruction like we're in now, we'd also have that ability. It's unlikely that we'll get specific direction on how our board will reopen at the secondary panel until probably midsummer. So, you recall, I think it was actually July 31st or the beginning of August last year, when we found out that our board, like many of the boards in the GTA, were designated boards. And for us, that meant students were, classes were split, students were co-horted into groups of 15, and we were in that adapted timetable. Right now, we're planning for face-to-face, but we'll get full guidance on school organization, on health and safety measures later on in the summer. So, it will be around things such as, you know, it could be masking or other types of personal protection. All of the safety protocols we have in place now, we'll be planning for those to start the school year, and we'll take direction both from public health and the ministries as to what we actually have to implement. But we'll be ready for that, and we've had kind of one shot at it already this year. A couple of updates with regards to graduation requirements. So, students who started this year in grade nine, there is a requirement that they earn two credits online as part of their OSSD, their Ontario Secondary School Diploma. And this sounds kind of strange. It says it's a mandatory requirement, but with exemptions. So, it is a mandatory requirement, but there is a process where students can gain exemptions from that requirement on an individual basis. We really haven't got much direction on what that exemption process is yet. There is conversations going on at the ministry level about students possibly being granted, I guess, recognition of the amount of time they've spent online this year because of us having to move to remote. So, whether or not that will count towards that two-credit, online, mandatory part of the OSSD, we're still waiting for some further direction on that. Also, in terms of graduation requirements, so we knew already that students who are graduating this year, the graduation, the OSSLT requirement has been waived. It will be for next year as well. The literacy graduation requirement will return in the 2022, 2023 school year. And as I said previously, next year, there will be two, there's planned to be two administrations of the literacy test, one in the fall and one in the spring. Secondary school parents would know that this year, we were afforded some additional flexibility in terms of how final marks are determined. We did not have students write formal final exams as we had in the past because of the nature of the quad-mester system. Though that final evaluation, growing success does allow for the final 30% of a grade to be determined in a number of ways, and some flexibility there. That flexibility will continue next year, and we're still having some discussions amongst senior staff as to how that will actually play out. It's a little bit, it becomes a little bit more difficult if we're in a quad system in Semester 1, because that might lend itself to a certain type of assessment. And then, a traditional Semester 1 and Semester 2, we do want to be consistent in terms of what our expectations are, so we're still, we're still working towards that. EQAO assessments at the elementary level have been kind of on pause. They will resume next year. So, students in Grades 3 and 6 and Grade 9, attending in-person, will participate in the EQAO online math reading and writing assessments, or at least that's the plan right now. Our students did not participate in the pilot projects this year, along with in the Grade 9 math assessment. They will next year, and part of that assessment can count towards a student's final mark. And we have used that EQAO assessment in the past as part of the student's Grade 9 final mark. We've talked a lot tonight about Dstream math. So, there's no longer an NPM 1D academic math or an MFM 1P applied-level math. Those are the two credits that, or sorry, two of the three credits that have been granted in the past. So, academic and applied credits on the transfer panel show up as MTH 1W. That's the new math code. And the new course, as I said, will replace the academic and applied courses. Locally-developed courses, and the course policy has not been changed yet, either in math or the other locally-developed courses that we offer at the secondary level. As always, there's a number of places where we can find, or where you can find updates, whether it's for our current school year or the school year coming. As we get more information from the ministry and direction from the ministry, we'll update those sites and obviously bring them back to the board as well. So, in terms of kind of structural and organizational things, we are working through what that secondary school timetable will look like for that two-period-a-day timetable. We're hopeful that, you know, the public health situation will allow us to offer extracurricular programming and clubs and teams and those sorts of things. But it's probably premature at this point to say that will happen in the fall, because I don't know if we'll be there yet, but we're really hopeful that we'll be able to start to offer all of those sorts of things that, you know, complement the academic program in our schools, the things that our schools are really well-known for, and those things that can reengage certainly our students who have been studying remotely for the entire year, or even for some of those students who, in this last, you know, part of the school year, maybe have become a little bit disengaged from school because we are back in that remote environment. In terms of the question that's got asked of ministry staff and government staff kind of nonstop over the last month or so is, will we be going back to school in June? So, will students return in-person prior to the end of the school year? We don't have an answer for that at this point. Anything I would kind of offer now would really just be kind of supposition. Certainly, the minister and the government have indicated that would be their preference, but always based on what guidance they're getting from the provincial public health table. I think there would be lots of advantages to our students, even for a few weeks, coming back face-to-face to close out the school year, but we don't have that specific direction as of yet. And I think that's my report, and I'm happy to try and answer any questions you might have or take away anything staff can't answer tonight.
Thank you, Director Daly. Before we get to that point, we'll have to vote to extend to 11:30. Trustee O'Brien, how do you vote?
Opposed.
Okay, we'll have to finish the vote. Trustee Ohern Sharnata?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Rashdi? Trustee Rashdi? We'll come back to Trustee Rashdi. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
Opposed.
Vice Chair Duer? Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Demasi?
Favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
And Trustee Murphy is in favor, and the motion fails to extend. This is, just to confirm with Parliamentarian Kapoor, since this is not an action item but an information item, I'm assuming we're not allowed to proceed with asking questions. We must terminate the meeting.
It says the, say for the item on the table. This is the item on the table. I would suggest that you could continue with questions, and when that's completed, you would need to adjourn.
Okay, thank you. I'll take your advice, and we will continue with questions. Up first, we have Trustee Agnew.
Thank you very much, and through you, Mr. Chair. Just two questions for Director Daly. One is around, I just, I wasn't sure if I heard it right, and I just wanted clarification on when we would be asking parents to commit to virtual school? Is, did I hear that was the middle of June?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. From, I believe the date is June 1st to June 12th. We did, you might recall, Trustee Agnew, that we did a bit of a survey of parents earlier in the year, just to get a sense of what the numbers would be like. The ministry actually asked boards, or kind of directed boards, to hold off until at least June 1st to give parents a little bit more time to think that through. But I believe the dates are June 1st to June 12th.
Okay.
Trustee Agnew, do you have a follow-up?
I do. I have another question. So, it's pertaining to our, our students with special needs in the high school system next year. So, provided we go into the model like we saw this year, and provided that the ministry continue the mandate that provides our Spec Ed students to be able to attend school full-time, what happens to those students who are, who have a special education needs but are not in a life skills program? You know, if they're integrated into the regular school program, what will happen with those students? Will they be allowed to be at school all day? Or will they not? I guess is my question.
So, if I, if I, if I'm understanding the question, Trustee Agnew, so our regular schedule will probably look something like a block of time in the morning for, say, Period 1, and then some lunch break, a block of time for Period 2. So, I guess I would anticipate if a student would typically be, say they were normally integrated into that Period 1 class, say it's, well, whatever it is, that they would be able to. I don't anticipate why they wouldn't be able to attend school all day. Like, I mean, while, you know, to be honest, and I guess I will be, to be honest, while the ministry is saying we're cohorting students in two groups, that's a pretty loose interpretation of cohorting. Like, really, we're saying for our students face-to-face, they could be in a Period 1 class with 25 students, and then they're going to go to a Period 2 class with 25 different students, who are in classes with 25 different students. So, while it's a form of cohorting, it's not, it won't be as tight as the cohorting we have this year. And hopefully, that's because more kids have been vaccinated, parents or staff have been vaccinated, and our COVID numbers are better under control, so it's generally felt to be a safer environment.
Thank you. I think Trustee Agnew has frozen, so we'll move on to Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to know about the exams for next year. Will students be writing exams?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. We haven't quite landed on that yet, Trustee Carabella, just because we're not 100% sure what format we're going to come back to in September. So, if we were back to the kind of adapted model we were in this year, I think it would be unlikely we would have that formal exam period. If we're in, in class every day in the two-period model face-to-face, that's a possibility. It really does, like, one of the things that we did here from, you know, we've heard from students this year is that even though they were only studying two courses at once, the 45-day period still was fast, lots to cover. So, what we tried to do this year was to try and keep more class time as opposed to exam time, but that's something we're still talking about at senior staff.
Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up question?
Well, I guess the follow-up would be that if they are not writing exams, how are we helping then, students, to prepare for university, especially like grade 11 and 12s?
That's a, that's a fair question. There's certainly more varied types of assessment at university, I think, now than strictly just exams, but certainly, that would still be a big bulk of the assessment practices at university. Students still would be writing some form of formal tests. I would, I would say that over a four- or five-year high school career, the amount of, still, the amount of paper and pencil tests that students write, they're probably good test takers by the time they leave us.
Thank you, Director Daly. Trustee Demasi, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, through Secretary Daly. As part of the graduate expectations, has the ministry made an announcement insofar as the community hours that are required? Have they lowered them? Have they kept them the same as last year? What is the status?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Trustee Demasi. And I'm not sure if I put it in, in the written report. So, we know that this year, the requirement was reduced to 20 hours. The requirement for next year will stay at 20 hours. It might be in the written report, but if it's not, I apologize for that. And then, in the 2022, 2023 school year, it goes back to, or the plan is it goes back to the 40 hours. So, thanks for, thanks for reminding me of that.
Trustee Demasi, do you have a follow-up?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. My question is around the high school and the semester, what it's going to look like next year. And correct me if I'm wrong, but did I understand that the ministry has asked for essentially a quad-mester again?
Yes, that's, 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 that's correct. Some boards did have an oxo-mester this year, and trustees might recall, we had, we had thought about that at one point last summer. Not many boards went that route. A few did. Most used some quad format. So, if the ministry's saying students can only, you know, essentially study in two cohorts or two classes, then, then we'll have to at least start the year under a quad, and then potentially, in second semester, go back to the traditional four-period-a-day.
Okay, so, just to clarify, and then I have another question, to clarify though, then, they, they've not mandated it? They've suggested it?
They have said that we should be prepared to only have students in two classes. So, we've been asked to prepare in a quad format. I think if a board came up with a different approach and pitched it to the ministry, I think they'd be open to that, or they might be open to it.
Okay, so, then my follow-up question is, is because we just passed our school calendar, which means then that- which means then that that would be rearranged, at least for the first semester, or would have to be because of, obviously, the exam days. It would just, it would change the calendar for that first semester to be split up into a quadmaster again.
Right, so it would take those, those five exam days and probably, and put two in the front part of the quad and two in the second part of the quad. I don't think we, we would be required to start the, or sorry, to resubmit the calendar. The start of school would be the same. The finish would be close to the same. We have kind of, in now planning the quad, we've kind of counted off the days to get through quad one and quad two. But yeah, those, it's, it's unlikely, it's very unlikely, I would say, that we're going to have five standalone exam days at the end of the semester, because it's unlikely we'll be on that semester format.
Can I ask another question, Mr. Chair? I know there's nobody in the chat, but I don't want to.
Yes, there, there's nobody in the queue after you, so please go ahead.
Thank you. So my other question is, is if we're starting off with the potential to have virtual schools, what would that be looking like? Are we looking to run another full virtual school again? And then if we go back to regular semesters in the second semester, would we just transition off of online? Or has the ministry given any indication that it'll be full, like, virtual will be for the full entire year next year again?
So the, the expectation from the ministry is that we offer a remote learning option for the entire year, both at elementary and secondary. What that looks like from board to board could be different, but there is an expectation that it's offered for the full school year.
And this is, this is when they're saying that it'll, they're expecting to give it to us early summer? Is, is that of what direction we'll be going in?
Yeah, so I think what the direction, Trustee Guzzo, the direction we'll be looking for in the summer, like, right now, we're planning for that majority of our students in-person, face-to-face at elementary and secondary. The curve could be, and again, it'll depend on lots of different factors, I guess, whether we get designated as an adapted model like we did this past year. So part of the day in school, part of the day at home. And I would guess that that would be almost completely based on what the public health situation is like. And I would say, I don't think we'll find out before midsummer. It's possible, but I, you know, indications are probably literally like July 31st or the first week in August would be when they would make that determination. And I guess trying to get a sense of what the, you know, what the overall public health situation's going to be like, it's hard enough to predict a month out. It's probably difficult to predict two months out.
Right, right, okay. I have other questions, but you didn't really touch on, on your report, so I guess I shouldn't really ask them. It's about the continuation of the virtual learning and, and the rumor, not the rumor, but the proposal of, of the three different types of learning models that will go beyond this, this next, this upcoming school year. So.
My, Trustee Guzzo, my opinion is that this is a, a school update, and, and it would be valid to ask questions that are not in the report because your ratepayers are, want to hear those same questions. So I believe your questions are valid.
Okay, thank you. So, so can I put my hand up to go in? I don't see anybody else in the chat again.
Yes, yeah, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, Director Daly, if you can, I know that there's been some correspondence that's come out, and I'm not sure that all of our, our parents and our stakeholders know kind of what's happening. But if there's been some media, and there was a link that was sent out for consultation that was had with the ministry in regards to proposing three different streams of education, including two remote models, one being synchronous and the other one being asynchronous. I know Oxta has sent it out, and it's essentially centralizing virtual learning on an ongoing basis. Do you have any, any insights you can, can bring to us on that?
I, I can talk at kind of a, I guess, a high level. So, you know, the ministry, the ministry and the government have talked about kind of what the future is for remote or online learning for, for both elementary, or certainly for secondary schools, but now for elementary and secondary schools. You know, they've seen both synchronous and asynchronous, full-on remote and hybrid learning over the last year and a bit. I guess we've had a taste of it to, you know, to varying degrees in boards across the province. So there was a consultation process that went on earlier in the spring. The government does bring proposals to what's called the Initiatives Table or the Initiatives Committee, and that's some representatives from teacher federations, from trustees associations, from council directors, probably principal councils, a variety of people. So there was a draft consultation that was conducted. None of that has really officially been made public, but some of the, I guess, the talking points or the plans were released. And really, it looks at a couple of options, longer-term options for the province, which involves TVO and TFO on the French side becoming a, I guess, a curriculum provider or to provide the content, the online content. It's plans to provide both full-on remote learning to students, synchronous and asynchronous online learning, both for elementary and secondary students. The ability for secondary students to, you know, connect with, with these online components from school, you know, out of, I guess, out of the cafeteria or the library or a common study area. Some of it has to do with providing online, online courses for internet, or access to remote learning for international students as well. It does lead into, or is tied into, obviously, the new graduation requirement for students to have two, two remote learning credits or two online learning credits. So it's a pretty, the proposal, or at least the proposal that was, that was discussed, and, or I've heard was discussed, is pretty far-reaching and lots of different types of implications. And I think that's why, again, it's, it's become a little bit more at the forefront, certainly in the media, as more information about the proposals, the draft proposals have made their way, you know, both into media and social media. As, as you did mention, the whole question about expanded online learning was something that the trustees associations, our Catholic trustees association, did make representations to the government, well, I think it's close to two years ago now. Certainly, from a Catholic perspective, concerns about if, if there's greater online learning or delivery of remote credits. Who's going to write that curriculum? Who's going to teach that curriculum from a Catholic board perspective? So Oxta's been at kind of the forefront of that. Certainly, the, kind of the professional association that I'm part of. As a director, we submitted feedback. I think the various superintendent associations have submitted feedback as well. But an official stance has not been communicated yet from the ministry to boards.
Okay, just to, just to follow up, Mr. Chair, and I noticed that there's somebody else in the chat, so I'll just finish on this piece. I, I will share with all the trustees. I just received it myself. So I will share it with everybody so that they can see exactly what we're talking about. My concern is, is it's already gone out. It was put out for feedback, and it was a very short window. It was from March 22nd when it was presented. And it, they, people had seven days to, to make written submissions. And it talks about, you know, centralizing this virtual learning piece, but then us as boards still being responsible for those students. And what does that mean? So that means less teachers assigned to our board, because they'll be centralized. There's a whole, a whole litany list of, of the impacts that will have on our students' learning on our board. And essentially, to me, it gives the appearance of, you know, privatization of part of our, of our education system. So I think it's something, as trustees, that we really should be looking at. And I know, as the director, it's, it's a little difficult for you to comment on when you haven't been given direct information on it. It's, it's really, it's, like you said, high level. But the fact is, is this is being talked about, and this is being discussed. And if, if we're not involved in this as well, and we have Oxta dealing with it on that one side, I think we also need to, to look at it as well and, and talk to our students and our parents. And I think our parents, us as a board, need to communicate this to our parents so that they understand what's happening and what's coming down the pipe. Because on face value, when you look at this, it looks like, oh, this will be great. So those courses in secondary school, you know, the ones that aren't necessarily offered all the time, it's guaranteed because we're going to centralize it. Well, that's not actually beneficial to us because there's a lot of different things that come with that. It means that, you know, we're taking it out of the school, and you could be taught by some, by a teacher somewhere else. So where does the support come? It just, it, it seems to me that it's, it's an attempt in, to almost create a fragmented education system. So I'll leave it at that, and thank you for, for sharing what you do know in regards to this. And, and to the trustees, I will share this information with you because I would like for us to be able to, to go further on this.
Thank you, Trustee Guzzo. Trustee Antamasi, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So a couple of points to pick up on, Trustee Guzzos and Secretary Daly. With reference to TVO, my understanding is that they wish to enhance, that is, the government's focus is to enhance the delivery of virtual learning first to remote areas. And subsequent to that, what they want to do, or what their mandate is, is to be able to offer it to other students who wish to stay at home and participate in education virtual. I don't think that the government is looking to fragment our education system. I think they're trying to enhance it. Virtual learning, as I say, do they want to dismantle school boards? I don't believe so. I think it's mostly conjecture, and it's, it's just backtalk. I, I further believe that what Trustee Guzzo is referring to, to, you know, mail out to answer questions, it's just a fact-finding mission. It's really not, you know, written in stone. And I really don't believe that we have to worry. I mean, the educational system, our educational system is entrenched. We have all kinds of schools, new schools being built. I don't know. It's somewhat of an alarmist view of what the government is trying to do. It's, it's almost like clandestine, and I don't believe that is the case.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your opinion, Trustee Antamasi. We've kind of taken, gone off the beaten path. So if there isn't any questions specifically relating to Director Daly's school update, we'll, we'll have to end the meeting here. So we will have to have a special meeting, which will pick up our, at our action items. We'll have to get together, I'll have to get together with the Vice Chair and Director Daly to determine when that will be. As you, as you can see, we have quite a few items to get through, so we may have to have more than one special meeting. And I know that the rest of the week is, is bad for Vice Chair. Duer and I are booked, and then early next week, we're booked. So we may even have to look at potentially moving some things around. But I don't want to speculate and give any dates that, that we may not live up to. I would like to, to thank our delegates and the delegations for, for coming forward. I apologize that we didn't get to, to your response, but I can assure you that we will have a special meeting, and that will be the first item on the agenda. We will not be accepting delegations for the special meeting as it is a continuation of the action items that we didn't get to. I'd like to thank all of the trustees for their collegial behavior and participation. I truly do appreciate it. And we will, Director Daly, do you have a comment?
Sorry, I just, yeah, I want to say thanks for, for rearranging the agenda just so we could give a bit of an update. I mean, we all know there's so many things going on in the board right now, but certainly, you know, what, what next school year would look like? I'm sure, in addition to all the other emails and questions you're getting, that's, that's starting to be discussed as well. So I appreciate the opportunity to share even a little bit of information. And certainly for trustees, if there's any questions you have about either what was in the report or the slides, or you need more detail, just let me know, and I can reply all to make sure we're getting information out in a timely way.
Thank you. So we'll do our closing prayer. Trustee DeRosa, you're, you have the closing prayer?
I do, Mr. Chair. Thank you. And I invite all my trustees, colleagues to join me in the sign of the cross. In the name of the Father, the Son, and Holy Spirit. Lord God, you've always cared for us as a loving Father. You lay out what's best for our lives. You're there to prod us when we do right, and you're there when we go astray, helping us to get back on track. Help us to understand and to remember our need to stay close to you. Help us find you in your holy words so we may gain more wisdom in life, in the decisions that we make and in the path that we take. Amen. Good night, everyone. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night. Thank you.